And I just want to ask, are you, any Senator Tenorio, I think you were preparing an amendment. All right. So Senator Tenorio, recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to present this. I know that we've been talking about this at length yesterday. And so I just wanted to go through and explain this amendment. This amendment completely rewrites Section 19. And the reason we did this is because we felt that over a number of different budget sessions, this legislature has changed the exemptions that are allowed in the contracts. And the contracts in most arrangements, example, the prevailing sentence presumption is that positions in the classified and unclassified service shall not be filled pursuant to a contractual arrangement except as provided in this section. And then it goes on to articulate. Now, I'll go through this quickly. Subject to Title V, GCA, Chapter 5, Governor Guam Departments and Agencies may contract with independent contractors, provided that no agency may contract for services customarily provided by employees in the classified service in that department or agency. So that's the first exception. The second is Governor Guam Departments and Agencies that do not customarily obtain professional services such as licensed health professionals, excuse me, licensed architects, licensed engineers, legal services, actuarial services, and auditing services through an employee in the classified service in that department, let's should say, or agency, strike that of, or agency, may contract to obtain such services. So this is the thing where you're allowed to get contracts for services where they're, it's not ordinarily provided in that agency. The Office of the Attorney General, what we did is we lumped the Office of the Attorney General and the Public Defender Service Corporation are authorized to contract with attorneys as independent contractors to provide services in areas in which it is impracticable or impossible for the office to proceed. Such contracts should be let in accordance with the procurement laws of Guam. No such independent contractor hired pursuant to this section may receive from the Governor of Guam any remuneration in any form other than in the payment for the position into which such person is hired. The Attorney General and the Public Defender Service Corporation Executive Director shall file a copy of every such contract with the Chief Procurement Officer and the Director of Administration, together with a written certification stating why it is impracticable to handle the matter within the office as otherwise constituted. And if you recall, this is pretty much the premise of the Hauser decision, which has been provided and everyone is aware. The section D, this section should not apply to the Department of Education, University of Guam, Guam Community College, Judiciary of Guam when filling positions of justices and judges pro tem, law clerks and legal interns, Guam Police Department when filling the position of legal counsel, Elektra Toronguahan, Guam Memorial Hospital, and the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse when filling positions of licensed health professionals. And by the way, Mr. Chairman, the issue of the Guam Police Department was relatively ambiguous before because it was a kind of a broad authorization for their hiring people on contract. And in this condition, we only allow it for the contracting of services only for the legal counsel, which I think was the original intent in the first place. And then finally, Section E, not finally, but Section E, any instrumentality of the Governor of Guam that fills any classified or unclassified positions by contractual arrangement in accordance with this section shall file a copy of every such contract with the Chief Procurement Officer, together with a written certification stating why it is impracticable to handle the matter within the instrumentality as otherwise constituted. Then D speaks to positions required for conducting the decennial census, which is the annual census of the island. And then E, Mr. Chair, is the amendment which was moved by my good colleague Fonjotna with regards to the Director of Mental Health. This is a rewrite in concert with the legal counsel of both minority and majority to try to make sure that we clean up this section, which has been basically added to and amended over a number of different sessions, but really wanted to make the clarity that these things are intended for certain things. The Guam Police Department had an open door to hire contracts. That wasn't the intent. The Attorney General, the public defender who have come before us, as a matter of fact, I'm one of, I'm the one who added the Public Defender Service Corporation, who said when they do have a vacancy, they need to be filled on a temporary basis. They need to hire a lawyer. The idea is to bring them on board for that purpose and only for that purpose. So, Mr. Chairman, the intent here is to rewrite and do it in such a way where it's intended to fill only those positions that they need for contractual arrangements and not to, not to supplant the classified service in the ability to hire individuals to fill positions that are needed. This is my say.
Thank you very much. On the Tenorio amendment, Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this actually clear up some of the quote-unquote mess under this section, meaning that it's so fragmented, I think this unified it, with one exception that I would like to make an amendment to the Tenorio amendment. And that is, Mr. Speaker, to strike out the Guam Police Department on D. And the reason is, of course, I checked yesterday and the day before yesterday that the legal counsel in the Guam Police Department is a classified position. No, I, believe me, I checked deeply into that. And in fact, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars a year plus benefit altogether, one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-two dollars. So, to that extent, I check, and it's classified. So they have no need for that independent contractor at this point.
All right.
So otherwise, I support the Tenorio amendment.
So you're, you're...
To strike out, it says, the Guam Police Department on D.
On subsection D.
Subsection D, Guam Police Department when filling the position of legal counsel. The legal counsel position is a classified position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. On the amendment to the Tenorio amendment by Speaker, Senator Palacios, to strike out Department, the Guam Police Department when filling position of legal counsel on subsection D, any objection? No objections? Amendment carries. Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? I've got... Senator Rector, where you gonna?
Yeah. If I could have a point of information for, on the author of the amendment, if he would yield to a question.
Senator Tenorio, will you yield to the amendment?
In, in letter A, or I guess subparagraph A, I suppose it would be called, we've added a little bit onto it that says, they basically added the very end, provided by employees in the classified service, then we have added the additional language, in that department or agency. So what that, what that worries me, and here is my concern. So if, if your department that gets your vehicles serviced by DPW, that's not part of your agency. So does that mean that now you can go out and contract your own mechanics? And then, you know, the same thing, accounting services, that mean you can go out and contract outside accountants when we have DOA do, do the books? You know, that's, that's my concern, is we're going to like have all these independent contractors, and we have government agencies, and line agency especially, that use DOA for a lot of services, use DPW for other services, use the AG for other services. And I just worry, and I wonder if that's the intent of the, of the maker of the amendment.
All right. Senator Tenorio, will you respond to the question?
No. The intent is to ensure that if we are hiring individuals as independent contractors, we're doing it as, out of necessity for that agency. So the agency has a need which is an exceptional need. It's not something that's ordinarily carried out. And, and they want to, to, let's say, repair a air conditioner, and they don't have maintenance, or if they need to require, they require the services of a contractor, which is by contract. We're talking about contracts here. We're not talking about long-term employment. We're talking about the ability to fill positions in Section A rereading, and which is the same pretty much language in what was originally Section B. Subject to Title V, GCA, Chapter 5, Governor of Guam Departments and Agencies may contract with independent contractors, provided that no agency may contract for services customarily provided by employees in the classified service in that department or agency. We're talking about, sir?
Yes. So the change in that, though, is that the current language in the bill reads "as permitted by law." And you're changing it to only allowing it in the agency?
So, you know what, Mr. Chair, I, the, the thing was done in concert with the legal counsel. I, I think the intent was to make it clear that within that agency, if you need contracted services, that is, that's the authorization to allow a contract to be issued for that services, which is not customarily provided in that agency. And remember that a department or agency is only going to be contracting for services needed under that agency. They're not contracting for another agency. So if the desire of the body is to take it and simply say, "except as permitted by law," then you can strike out in the classified service, and from the end of the sentence, just replace, "except as permitted by law." That, that would be the exact language, and, which is fine. I think the intent here was to clean up all the other sections, because it'd been kind of convoluted over many different budget hearings, budget processes. But if the desire is to just take that out in the last five words in that department or agency and replace it with the original language, "except as permitted by law," that was the intent in the first place, was to make those exceptions down the line. So if that's, if that's the desire of the gentleman or any of the body, of course, then they can restore that language. We were intending to draw out exactly what the exceptions were. But if it's more clear, or if it's easier for the gentleman to work with, "except as permitted by law," that's fine with me.
All right. Okay. Senator Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, if, if I could have a brief recess to, to consult with legal counsel on this, I, that's why I just asked the question. I just wanted to make sure I got the clarification so that we all make sure we have what we want in law. So, thank you.
All right. We'll take a short recess.[731.44]
Back in session. Senator Rector, when we broke session, you were going to confer with legal counsel, and now we're back.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, after deferring, discussing with legal counsel, I think I'll defer to the author of the bill. He's got a couple amendments that he wants to make to his own bill, so...
All right. Thank you very much. Any other member of the body wish to speak on the Tenorio amendment? If not, then I'll ask Senator Tenorio to close on his amendment.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to consult and confer with both legal counsel and my colleagues. I have three minor amendments. Number one is, at the end of the very first, Section 19, which says, "Position in the classified and unclassified service should not be filled pursuant to a contractual arrangement except as provided in this section." Additive language at the end of that, before the period, would be "for fiscal year 2010," just to be clear.
Okay. All right, so on that amendment, to add "for fiscal year 2010," at the end of the first sentence, no objections. That amendment carries.
All right. Mr. Chair, thank you. And the second amendment of three is on Section A, at the very end, to strike out "in that department or agency" and replace it with "except as provided by law." So strike out "in that department or agency" in place instead, except as provided by law.
All right. On the amendment by Senator Tenorio, it'll be Section A, subsection A, at the end, "in that department or agency" will be stricken, replaced with the words "except as permitted by law." Any objections?
Provided.
Provided or permitted is the reason? Or provided by law?
Yes.
All right. Okay, provided. No objections.
Then, Mr. Chair, thank you again. And the second, or the third of three is to insert, where it originally had Guam Police Department when filling the position of legal counsel, to replace that language. So it was originally deleted, so we're just going to insert in that blank now, "the Department of Revenue and Taxation when filling the position of tax attorney." So it will read, "the Department of Revenue and Taxation when filling the position of tax attorney."
Okay. On that amendment, no objections. That amendment carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to try to clean up this section. This is my say.
Okay. So, are you done, Senator Tenorio? All right. On the Tenorio amendment, as amended, any objections? Senator Rector, objection? All right. I'm going to call for a vote, then. All in favor of the Tenorio amendment, raise your hand. Yeah, I don't have to. The amendment carries. I can call. I'm chairman of the... Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Yeah, maybe. Any other comments on Section 19? If not, Section 20 is the amendment to the comparative revenue and expenditure reporting. This is, again, a carryover from last year's budget, as well as a provision that was requested by the governor, and it just allows an amendment based upon last year's budget that allows reserve funds, BBMR, to make some reservations if revenues do not come in. I think this was something that was heavily discussed last year, to allow flexibility. No comment? No objections? Okay. Actually, no comment. So, we are now, then, in Section 21, to amend 4119 of Chapter 4, Title V GCA. This is the section on performance-based budgeting. The, there was an amendment last year, as part of, or part of the bill last year, and part of the requirements was that certain departments and agencies submit performance-based budgeting. Those agencies did submit their request for performance, or their performance-based budgeting, and met a September deadline for this year. There is a, was a bill that required a reduction in the salary if they did not meet that, and they did, so we just basically took that out. But it also required them to implement it. And so this section would place the reduction of salary for the non-implementation of the performance-based budgeting with the Director of the Bureau of Budget and Management and the Director of Administration in terms of ensuring that these agencies continue to comply with that mandate. Senator Tenorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I apologize if I missed something there, but in removing the date, strikeout, do we not set the bar for implementation? I'm sorry, I may have missed your explanation a little bit.
Twenty-one, twenty-one. Yes.
So, my question, if you could, I know that you're chairing, but could you reiterate the strikeout provision there and the effect of that?
Oh, the effect of that? Actually, this is an amendment to that. The, in last year's budget, and in previous legislature, there was a provision to require performance-based budgeting by certain departments and agencies, that they needed to submit a budget and then implement the budget. And what, they did submit their budget, there was a September of this year requirement, that they submitted before this budget cycle. Those agencies submitted their budget. We copied those budgets and sent them out to the different offices. I think there's six agencies, plus the Department of Education's central office. And so they did submit, in addition to the budget, the regular budget that they submitted, they submitted a different set based on performance base. And so they were required to submit that on September 19th.
So then, this then makes it a cyclical, continuing requirement, right?
That's right. And if they don't do that, then BBMR, right, if they don't do that in the future, BBMR and DOA can then deduct that 20 percent. Because part of that law was that if they don't submit that, then they get to be deducted 20 percent from their pay.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask, and I thank you for the explanation, is we're trying to, you know, work in a direction of establishing accountability and outcomes as a result of the budgeting process, as opposed to simply appropriating money, which, you know, goes to any number of agencies under the Government of Guam requirement, and as well as many vendors of the Government of Guam, but not holding those agencies, not just accountable, but in a outcome-oriented fashion. So by virtue of striking this out, then, this penalty can be assessed at any point in the future for failure to comply with that, as opposed to simply removing that date implementation date, so that we're simply removing the requirement and holding the standard to whenever they want to do it. So that, I appreciate, because, you know, I, I think, along with the many members of the body, I mean, you've been in a lot more budget sessions than I have, but in the minis that I've seen, I really would like to see what is the end result, what is the outcome of the appropriations that we make. And that is the essence of performance-based budgeting, and I appreciate the explanation, and I have no objection to this section. This is my say.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Any other comments? If not, we're on Section 22. Again, this is the same requirement, that we took away the September 29 deadline, because they've met that deadline, and so we're requiring them to continue to work forward. Okay? Section 23, prohibition of public...
Actually, Mr. Speaker, if I may, Section 22, just a technical correction, because by virtue of the recently enacted law, it should read DOE, Department of Education.
All right. So GPSS changes to DOE on Section 22. Yes, that'll be a general technical amendment, that any reference to GPSS in the budget be changed to Department of Education. So on that amendment by Senator Ogden, Senator Tenorio amendment, no objections, that amendment carries. Section 23 is, again, a carryover from last year's budget. This was to prohibit public assistance funds from purchasing tobacco and alcoholic beverages. If I recall correctly, this was introduced by Senator Palacios as an amendment to the budget last year. We wanted to carry it forward, and I guess at some point, we want to probably codify this so that we don't have to continue to carry it forward. But would you like to move that as a technical amendment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just moved that the legal counsel be authorized to codify this section.
Okay, all right. So, on the amendment by Senator Esposito to require, or to make the, allow the legal counsel to codify this provision, no objections. Senator Calvo?
Again, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, we're still in Section 20?
Three.
Twenty, okay. And again, if I just have a question, I was just in consultation, if you allow me, just a request, if we could, we supplied with the performance-based budget from the other agencies, because we received a copy, but it didn't appear to be a PBB.
Uh, okay.
Okay?
We will, I'm pretty sure we send that to you, but we'll look at our log.
Thank you, sir.
Because they did, they did submit it. I want to state for the record, that they met the submission for this fiscal year, the departments that were identified as being required to do so. And we'll get that to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Calvo. Okay. So, we are now, then, on Section 23, which is wireless communication restrictions. Okay? Any comment, Senator Tenorio, on Section 23?
Uh, yes.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I agree. We'll make sure we look at the section numbers and correct them accordingly. Thank you very much, Senator Spalding.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment on Section 23. It's been passed out, it's probably somewhere among your documents. You know, honestly, I got people saying 23 and 24, but...
Yes, we, it was misnumbered. It should be 24.
Oh.
Okay, and so...
Oh, I see. Okay, okay. So 24, then, please.
Right. It's the wireless communication restrictions.
Right. All right. So Section 24. Mr. Chairman, you know, you and I, as a matter of fact, a great vast number of our people that are working in the government get and communicate efficiently by way of communication systems that we have readily available. You have yours in your pocket, one right in front of you, I've got mine. We've all, and many managers and supervisors through this government, use wireless communications to be able to efficiently communicate with and correspond through, not just constituents, but our supervisors, our managers, a number of different agencies use wireless communications to, in fact, accomplish the necessities of our government. And many times, these same government employees, again, from directors to supervisors, managers, use their own funds, in many cases, and which is, and I frankly think it's unfair. I think it's unfair for us to require the efficiencies we expect from this government, but not to give any remuneration, or any compensation, or consideration to these employees who use their time and their dollars to do the work of this government. And here's the thing, there was a previous section that basically said, "no communication, no nothing." What happened was, if you remember, immediately after that, the media started trying to get a hold of certain people in our government. And you know, as I do, we get calls all the time. And not just us in this legislature, but many people, which is a broader spectrum of our government, the executive branch, requires them to be accessible. So this amendment, Mr. Chair, allows for wireless communication restrictions, will have two additive language. The first will be at the end of the first sentence. So it will read, and it basically adds, "except as otherwise provided by this section." So that's the larger spectrum. The exception is at the very end. If you see, do you have my amendment?
No.
All right. Give me a minute, then, to have this reproduced.
All right. We're in a short recess.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to withdraw the amendment. We'll introduce it as a separate bill. Thank you.
Okay, that would be good. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Okay. All right, we are at the end of the miscellaneous provisions. And I see Senator Adat's hand up. I see Senator Barnes. Hold on. I think maybe I'll just start in alphabetical order. No, I saw the hand. Senator Adat, Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Espicio, Senator Ogden. I see Senator Palacios. I see Senator Rector. Okay, so far, so far I have, again, Senator Adat, Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Espicio, Senator Ogden, Senator Palacios, Senator Rector. Okay. We will then start with Senator Adat.
Information before you go on. As, how would you like to proceed on this? Like, if we have more than one amendment, which I do, do we want to make one amendment when it's our turn and then go back through the cycle until the next amendment, or do we want to make all three amendments at one time?
I think we'll go around then.
Okay.
One amendment at a time.
I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Okay. Senator Adat.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask for the indulgence of the body to, I want to introduce an amendment to add a new section. And what it is, it pertains to the personnel rules and regulations for the Port Authority of Guam. I'll just explain a little bit and then I'll pass out the amendment. But what happened was, in the last session, this body had discussed and passed the Personnel Rules and Regulations, which provided for the pay adjustment for the Port Authority of Guam. During the course of that discussion, the original bill that was actually introduced was amended considerably, and actually, there was an overcorrection that was made to the bill. And one of the overcorrections was that it inadvertently deleted or excluded one of the appendices that should have been a part of that Personnel Rules and Regulations. We did exclude one of the appendices because we wanted the port management to go back and identify now the new list of employee positions that would be affected by the pay adjustment, and for the manager to then be able to post this, for the employees to be able to review the changes that were made as a result of the bill having been changed to include all employees. And in that part, was then he had, like, I believe, 60 days to complete that list, submit it to the board for their final disposition. And that was one of the conditions that had to be met prior to implementing the adjustment and the compensation. Unfortunately, in the process of amending the bill, an overcorrection was made, and the pay schedule was excluded. And that pay schedule is very important. So, because it establishes actually the benchmark as to where the pay increases will begin. So, Mr. Chairman, I provided you a copy yesterday. I would like to go ahead and pass a copy of the proposed amendment to the body, and then they can take a look at it. I will assert that this amendment that I'm proposing has had its due and the proper hearing, when the original law, which we had just passed in the last session, it actually went through that process. We had the public hearing, it had a committee report, it got reported out, and then it made it on the floor. All I'm doing now is making really a correction, which will bring back that appendix that was inadvertently excluded. So, if you prefer, Mr. Chairman, unless you've already decided, I would like to go ahead and pass out this amendment for the information of the committee or the whole, so they can take a look to see if it's an issue that we can justifiably address at this session today.
Senator Adat, the... Is there any change at all in the appendix?
No, Mr. Chairman. In fact, if one was to take a look at the... This was the Personnel Rules and Regulations that was approved. And in this Personnel Rules and Regulations, there was an Appendix A, which was the listing of the employees, the authorized positions that would receive the pay adjustments. That one, we excluded, because there will be changes to that, because now all the authorized positions will be included. The Appendix B, the pay schedule, which is, I've provided there as an attachment to that amendment, is the very same pay schedule that was in the Rules and Regulations that was initially submitted. And there has been no change to that. What this pay schedule does is it now establishes the compensation that will be given to an employee who is in a particular grade level at a specified step. And so, that's what this pay schedule is all about. And this has to be codified by law, because that becomes the benchmark, then, for the port to be able to adjust the pay of the employees up to the 10th percentile of their counterparts in the shipping industry. Correct. They cannot go outside of this pay schedule. They could, and what has happened already as a result of the bill that has, the law that has been passed, is that the intent was to show each employee, here's the job evaluation that was made on your particular position, and here was the rating that was given. Some of the employees have, and it was intended then to give the employees an opportunity to go in and say, well, I disagree with this rating. I think it should be a higher grade. And in a couple of cases, that has already occurred, where the employee appealed, their HR department went back and looked at it and say, yes, we agree, this should be at a higher pay schedule, or at a higher grade. What this pay schedule does, then, is it provides that point of, frame of reference then that says, okay, then, for this grade level at that step, here's the annual salary for that particular position.
Thank you very much, Senator Adat. Senator Adat, I, you know, there's a provision, of course, in the law that any unrelated matter to the budget bill, which this pretty clear is at this time, it's, there's no appropriation level at all for the Port Authority of Guam in this budget bill. And the fact that this, if this was, that there, there's obviously changes already being made to that pay schedule based upon, as you said, some employees coming in and pleading the change.
No, no, Mr. Chairman. There's no changes to that pay schedule, that Appendix B, which we, which was inadvertently excluded. There's no change to that. The change that has been made is that a particular position may have been initially rated to be at a grade C. In going back to reevaluate it, they found that it really merited a higher grade level. But it's still, so at that higher grade level, the compensation remains within the parameters of this pay schedule. I would assert that this amendment is relevant to the budget bill, because it involves the operations of the government, although it does not, it does not have anything to do with the general fund projection and all that. It does have, it pertains to the operation of the government, and it has had a public hearing.
So, the pay schedule being proposed was part of the original public hearing?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. In fact, you would see in the Rules and regs that was initially transmitted, and we ultimately approved, with the exception of Appendix A and B, that what is attached in this amendment is the same.
Why didn't we approve?
It was, I'll take responsibility for the error. It was an overcorrection on my part. In the language, I had put in there excluding Appendix A and B, and it really should have only excluded Appendix A.
Okay. Excuse, thank you very much, Senator Adat. Senator Cruz?
Just a point of information, Mr. Chairman. Could the author yield, I'm trying to figure out why on the three pages that he has for his amendment, two pages, there are highlights and underlining, underscoring and cross-throughs? I'm trying to figure what that is.
Yeah.
The highlights was really just to emphasize, you know, out of, out of the three pages, 500 words, however, I'm trying to focus everybody in on really the important, the salient points of the amendment. The first part is on Section 1. I'm trying to focus everyone on the fact that the Personnel Rules and regs was adopted. And what we want to correct by virtue of this amendment is to include back in Appendix B. So, that's why I highlighted that in Section 1. In Section 2, I highlighted that the fact that the, what we're trying to do is we're trying to establish, trying to establish that point of reference, okay, which Schedule B does. And the fact that the general manager, which the law requires him to go back, identify now all these authorized positions that will be getting the adjustment in pay, and that he will then provide the information as to the position description and the recommended pay range, which was determined from the study that they did.
But Senator Adat, if I may just really get one simple question answered, is, in the presentation you have, are all the underlined, regardless of whether they're highlighted or not, amendments to the original bill?
Correct, to the law that was passed last year.
That was passed? Yeah. I'm sorry, Senator Adat. I think it's a little bit more extensive than just adopting the omitted pay schedule. And as such, I'm going to rule that this bill would need and require a public hearing. So, that's the ruling of the chair. At this time, you're free to appeal the ruling. So...
What's the appeal process?
I guess the...
Well, no, I will not put the body into that, in that position. I'll stand by the chairman's ruling.
Thank you very much, Senator Adat. Okay. All right. I have Senator Munia Barnes.
Señor presidente, I have several amendments, but one amendment from me and several from the speaker who's unavailable at this time, she's on dental appointment.
Yes, so...
We'll go ahead and do it one at a time?
We'll go around.
Okay. I passed out, Mr. Chair, an amendment, and it's with the star on the right-hand corner, and it just adds a new section after Section 24. And this is based on our earlier discussion regarding the provision, the object category to give drug testing to the different agencies.
Oh, okay.
Do you have it there? Does everybody have a copy?
I know, I know we had it. I'm looking for it.
It was given last week.
Yes.
Did you want me to talk on the provision first?
Do members of the body have that? Okay.
It is the one that says Tina Rose Munia Barnes on the right-hand side, it has a star, or a star, star, star. Yeah, Star David.
Can we, can we just make the copy available? Okay.
Do you have it?
Yes, we have it. I just couldn't tell you it was a star. Okay, Senator Barnes?
Yes.
The member, Tom? Sergeant-at-Arms, could you please?
It's a left-handed star.
Find a copy, no, no, Tom, I need that. Can you get an extra copy and make it, make a copy for the clerks, for sure, legal counsel, as well as other members of the body who do not have a copy?
It's to add a, Mr. Chair, if I may, my amendment has Page 151, Section 24, at this section to read, but it would be that next number, based on, because it was 23, and now that we corrected, I think this should be 25.
Yeah, we don't have to note the number, the legal counsel will make those changes.
We'll make the technical corrections, okay. And it specifically reads, Mr. Chair, "The sum of $25,343 previously designated for each individual agency to conduct random drug testing shall be deposited into an account with the Department of Administration, which is tasked with the implementation and payment of all testing by government employees as set out in Executive Order 95-29 and 2005-18. This fund shall not be subject to the Governor's Transfer Authority." And as we previously spoke, Mr. Chair, we, I'd like to thank you and your committee for taking the time to, based on the information that we received from the Department of Administration, and also working closely with the concerns of my good brother from Baragón, Senator Bloss, in reference to acknowledging the tests designated positions that needed to go through. We did a whole collaboration and a listing of the positions that needed and were required by the executive orders, and that were implemented by the Department of Administration for the tests designated positions. And knowing that some agencies got some drug testing funds and knowing that some agencies didn't, where the majority of the test, drug testing positions that were designated weren't provided for, I personally feel, and I hope my colleagues will agree with me, that if we put this collaborative effort back to where it should be from the way beginning was the Department of Administration, taking the funds from there, not taking anything from any of the agencies, but for that specific purpose. Also noting, Mr. Chair, that each drug test for each employee will cost, on average, at present, of $37.50. And knowing that the Department of Administration currently has a contract with the provider, and that that has been the provider, only provider, sole provider here on Guam, so I'm asking my colleagues to support this amendment, to take the previously designated funds and put it into the Department of Administration, based on the executive orders.
Thank you very much, Senator Munia Barnes. I have Senator Palacios, Senator Rector, and Senator Cavill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, of course, I support the, I support, of course, the transfer of this amount to, but I'm not going to argue with the language of the structure here, for example. We just have to be careful. The sum of $25,000 previously designated for each individual agency seemed to imply that each individual agency has $25,000, which is not true.
Oh, okay.
But just as a caution. But my main comment regarding this, Mr. Chairman, is that, when it says here, let me see, to conduct random drug tests, understand that there are four situations where drug tests, for the initial employment, for the after-incident situation, when, for example, a police crash or a bus driver crash, incident situation, and the real random drug test, only for this designated position. There may be no cause, we just, you're a police officer, go and have drug tests within the next two hours. And of course, the voluntary, so-called safe harbor. So, maybe we can just say, the sum of $25,000 previously designated for each individual agency, for drug testing, for drug testing shall be deposited. That way, then it covers all of that. All of that situation. That's my comment.
Is that an amendment?
Yes, sir.
All right. Just, it would, to strike out the word "random" and just say "drug testing," which encompasses all types?
Yes.
Yes.
To all the situations.
Okay.
No objections.
So, any objections on that?
No objections.
No objections? The amendment carries? Okay. Yeah, that would be corrected. Okay, that's, that would be a technical correction. Okay, Senator Palacios, you're done. I have Senator Rector on the amendment. Then I have Senator Cavill, then I have Senator Ogden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Senator Rector, I did, it's an R.
Am I cutting in? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a, it's an R, it's a espicio. Yes, I know, this is on the Barnes amendment. Yes.
You're confusing me.
Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry. Senator Rector? I'm sorry, it was, Senator Espicio was talking about making an amendment, not speaking on the Barnes amendment. So, you're next on the Barnes amendment.
All right, here we go. It's my turn again. And I take back my previous apology, darn it. No, no, I'm only joking. Yes, you know, I rise in support of this amendment. It's a good amendment for a number of reasons. One of the, one of the problems we've had in the government of Guam is all the individual agencies trying to repeat the same services, and not taking advantage of the economy of scale, of having one agency that's an expert bulk buying with this, which this amendment would allow the Department of Administration to do, one. Two, drug testing is, there's a lot of rules involved. There's, it's a very strict procedure, no matter how you do it. And it takes properly trained people to administer legally acceptable drug tests. So, instead of training people at every individual agency, it makes sense that we have a cadre of trained professional drug testers at DOA to administer all the tests. That way, the chain of, chain of evidence and the chain of command are always intact. So, I think this is a great amendment, and I commend the author for making it. I do have a question, and it was raised by the previous speaker on this amendment, where there seemed to be some question on the dollar figure, $25,343.
Yep.
And so, then I would pose the following amendment to this amendment, to replace the words "the sum of $25,343" with "all monies." So, "all monies previously designated for each," blah, 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 blah. And I think that might cover it.
Okay.
But I'm not, I'm not married to it, but I just, they're trying to cover the...
Well, there was a, there was a technical amendment made to ensure that that 23 is not an appropriation to each individual agency, that it is the entire sum. So...
So, was that technical amendment already made? I thought we just made, got rid of the "random."
No. Senator Tiedegui and...
I'm sorry, I must have missed that. Then I withdraw my amendment, and I rise in support of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector, Senator Cavill, on the Tina Munia Barnes amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm not against the amendment, I just want to understand a little bit more better, more clear. So, if the author could yield to a question?
Senator Barnes? Yes, she will.
Yeah, and the question is, again, I see the statement put out by the legislature, positions by agency that fall under Executive Order 9529, 2005-8 for random drug testing. And then it gives all the agencies and then the position count, and it breaks down those positions. and it breaks down those positions. Now, with this amendment in place, and you're, you're, you're putting it all now, rather than in separate departments, but all under the auspices of Department of Administration, does it still keep the, the, uh, the positions as outlined on, on this appendix or this supplement sheet that was given? Or does it now allow for the department itself, Department of Administration, to, uh, to make, how would you say, I guess, to change any order in regards to testing? And I know it's all being, it's all being under the, it's all under the position now Department of Administration and the responsibility. And it does say that the governor has tran- no transfer authority, but DOA now is going to take the budget that has been broken down for, for all these different agencies. I mean, can, can DOA now change any of the spend per, per agency as designated on the executive order? Or is it just, is it just handling the administration of it? I guess that's the question.
I think, just based on, on, on these discussions we had previously, Senator Calvo, um, a lot of the agencies that had funding for the, the, um, drug testing, um, were not necessarily set in a priority, and based on the discussion that we had, Senator Blos talked about, the, um, the test-designated positions, where the agencies were, who had the majority of the test, uh, designated positions, didn't have any funding source, and knowing that there exists a policy and an executive order in place, that we would revisit that and, and account for, for what has hap- what has happened in the past. So, what we did was, we took the funding source that was allocated to the different agencies, put it back where it was originally, um, handled with, and knowing, and still noting that the Department of Administration did know that to do, to effectively work this based on all the test-designated positions that needed to go through the, whether, what category of the drug testing, it would cost more than $25,000. As a matter of fact, that range was talking between $60,000 to $100,000 to be safe, but even knowing that all the agencies that needed to have the funding source available, it was not afforded to them. So, I said, to be fair and be equitable across the board, we take the sums provided today, put it back, and look into it further, and work closely with the Department of Administration into further providing some, uh, the strength and, and the funding needed to, to, to make this program work.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much for the explanation, and I'm, and I'm wondering, Mr. Chair?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and the, I do note that, again, in this, in this handout, the total funding required for random te- test for all the line-agey positions, and it gave the position counts of total of 1651, and then it gave a percentage based on those positions for every agency, and, um, the total amount was 61,913. Now, the total funding for the drug testing in this bill is $25,343, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna kinda yield to the chair, 'cause I don't know, I, I wanna keep this budget balanced. But if, if the total funding requirement is 62, close to 62,000, and we have appropriation so far of 25, uh, I'm, I'm wondering if, if, it doesn't seem like an inordinate amount of money, but maybe if we could, maybe as we get to the miscellaneous appropriation side of things, maybe we could, um, we, we could try to fully fund the, um, the, the testing pursuant to, you know, the, the handout sheet, which is about 62,000.
I think that, that amount, though, is assuming that every single person on that list gets tested, and I think that's not the way it's done. We based it on the positions and the requests by the different departments of what they, um, anticipate using for those departments and agencies. So, the likelihood of every single position in that being tested
Yeah.
is probably not that high. Senator Blos, I know, does workplace drug testing, so he's probably a little bit more familiar with the likelihood on those, those kind of issues.
Oh, so, so, the 1,006, there's, and those 1,651 positions that are outlined, those, those are more, I would, I guess akin to test-designated folks that are critical positions?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you very much for that clarification, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you very much, and thanks for your assistance, Senator Blos. Okay, so, Senator, any, uh, additional comments on that? Senator Ogden is on, uh, the Senator Munya Barnes amendment on drug testing.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker. I just have a couple of questions. First and foremost, uh, just for clarification purposes, the $25,000, the funding source all originates from the GF, or regardless as to what funding source?
It was all, that amount is the amount that was in each of the different departments and agencies.
So, regardless as to the originating source, funding source?
Right.
Okay. And the, the other question that I, or concern, maybe it's more or less a concern, because over the course of the past several years, one of the comments that has been made in regards to some of the drug testing costs associated with conducting drug tests, regardless as to the, whether the random or initial hires, is that some of these tests could cost in excess of $30, $35. And you know, as a parent, having had to, the opportunity to have my children tested because their participation in sports, it costs my wife and I $20 for every comprehensive drug test that, that my children had to take. So, in this case, I certainly hope that by virtue of allocating this and, and putting it into one general agency and having the Department of Administration administer it, that they can work on, on efficiency as well as trying to save, uh, a few do- extra dollars in terms of the administration of the drug test. I wanted to bring that up as a, as an issue, because I think that any time that you're looking at a comprehensive drug test, that certainly we need to try to minimize costs and try to spread the dollars as much as possible. Now, the, the, uh, final question I have, Mr. Chairman, of the sponsor of the amendment, and I'm certainly very supportive of this particular initiative, but Executive Order 95-29 and 2005-18, I, I had a few days ago, uh, the opportunity to be able to briefly review it, and I know that, that the good sponsor of the amendment was sending it over in my direction, but I, I, I'm familiar with one of these executive orders that delineates the law enforcement agencies, and where these agencies or these positions are subject to random testing. Uh, and that was a requirement, I take it, by virtue of complying with federal regs. Now, my question is, do, do those two executive orders also apply to initial hires, as opposed to the random testing?
What was your reading of it?
No, no, I, I only remember the
Oh, you didn't read it?
Law enforcement positions, Mr. Speaker. So, if I can ask the...
One is for new hires and one is for random.
Okay, so it does incorporate also the, the initial hires? Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Barnes? Any other, uh, Senator Ogden was the last one, who had his hand raised, then Munya Barnes, drug testing amendment. Senator Barnes, you may close.
Thank you, uh, Sido Smasi, Mr. Chair, and I just wanna take the time to thank my colleagues for supporting and ask the rest of my colleagues who didn't speak to support this amendment. As you know, uh, I just wanted to give, um, uh, the funding source to the administration who already, uh, by executive order is, um, promulgated to work on these, and I'm just knowing that, uh, based on our financial constraints and the concerns that Senator Calvo brought up, that in the event that there is extra funding available, that we can look at in, into putting the remainder, the remainder of the balance that is needed to fulfill the full mandate of the, of this amendment, I, I think should, uh, be afforded. So, I'm asking for, you're also asking for your support in, in making sure that if there's any additional funding in the miscellaneous provisions, that we look into providing the additional funds needed for this. So, I just wanna thank you again, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to proffer this amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Munya Barnes. On the amendment by Senator Munya Barnes, as amended, there's no objections. The amendment carries. I now have Senator Rispicio, uh, no, I have you. Yes. As a, to offer an amendment. Yes, I do have you. Yes.
Thank you very much.
I have a list.
Thank you very much, um, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, you know, I'm a stickler for the rules and, uh, process, and, uh, as this process was set out by a law that you championed, uh, which required a public hearing for anything that's non-budget-related, uh, I wanted to, uh, comply with that, uh, fully, uh, and I introduced a bill that would address, uh, something that, um, we kinda had an oversight over in, uh, September of 2002. September of 2002, Public Law 26-140, added PPQ officers to the list of definition of uniform personnel, uh, but when there was a new law to give the 10% increase to law enforcement officers, there's another, um, um, section, um, that didn't recognize the commodity inspectors which are performing the functions of, uh, PPQ. So, we, uh, introduced a bill, had a public hearing, uh, and the timelines, um, of which, when this law was passed, uh, these, there were 12 employees, they tried to get, uh, Department of Administration and Customs to recognize that new law, but because there's no, uh, PPQ, um, designation, uh, eight of the 12 employees transferred to Customs, and they became Customs Officers. However, these four employees chose to remain, uh, under, uh, PPQ, uh, and as a result, they didn't get that, um, 10% law enforcement raise. So, I have an amendment that, um, very quickly would, um, add commodity inspectors and, uh, entomologists, and I have a letter from Department of Administration, uh, Department of Agriculture, rather, uh, supporting this, uh, amendment, uh, which was part of the public hearing. I also have a, um, letter from, uh, USDA, um, that talks about, um, these inspections being, um, law enforcement in nature, they enforce federal laws and regulations, uh, and they have the authority to enforce, they make enforcement actions, make seizures, uh, drug, or, uh, contrabands or what have you, and issue violations, including collection of civil penalties as uncompensated, uh, federal officers. So, there's letters of support, uh, for this, and the amendment would, um, extend this, um, law enforcement, um, raise, uh, to them as well. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispicio. Senator Rispicio, um, based upon the, um, presentation you made and the, uh, process that this, uh, change, um, and this amendment has undergone, uh, I'm gonna rule that it is acceptable and, and, uh, will, um, place it before the body for, uh, a vote on, as an amendment to, uh, chapter to the miscellaneous provisions of this budget bill. And I have Senator Palacios, who's raised, uh, who wishes to speak on it.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, of course, I support the amendment, but with some comments, for example, uh, striking the PPQ, plant protection and quarantine, that's an officially established position with, within DOA, and I think the new category now, probably, it might have been established. But that is because now, the former PPQ is now under the, the Customs and Quarantine, where before, when it was named PPQ, it, it actually came from the Department of Agriculture. And I think this legislature, I had dealt with the, with, with that issue of transferring that unit back and forth, I think, for the third time. And my, my concern here is, is the, the possibility in the future that perhaps, and we're still debating now, at some point, that perhaps maybe it should again go back to the Department of Agriculture and so forth. And so, my, my, my amendment here is just to leave the PPQ. Just don't strike it out.
Leave the position description, position, okay.
Yes, yeah, I, do not strike it out. Even though it may not be functional now, but it is already an established position that probably one day, again, the Department of Agriculture might probably end up again with, with that.
Okay.
Uh, so, only that, but
All right.
And that's my comment. But I support the inclusion of entomologists and the, what do you call that, the inspector?
Spectors.
Yeah, I, I, I support the inclusion of that.
Yeah, I've, I've no
Senator Rispicio?
Yeah, I've no objections, I thank Senator Palacios for that.
Okay.
Uh, I guess I felt to also point out that it was Department of Agriculture that changed these position titles to commodity inspectors and entomologists, but, but the legislature, um, didn't have an opportunity to go and change the, the definition of those qualified under, um, under this, um, section of the uniform personnel.
So, the Palacios amendment would be to, uh, remove the strikeout on
Yeah, yeah.
And plant prote-
Correct. And I thank him for that amendment.
Or maybe just, and then, and just reorder it, just remove the strikeout on "and" plant protection, but strike out "and" and add it at the end.
Yeah, so it'll read, yeah, "plant protection and quarantine officers," and then
And, okay. So, on that amendment? No objections? All right? Any other, uh, speakers on the Rispicio amendment? If not, no objections. Amendment carries. Now I have, uh, Speaker Wampat. I had Senator Munya Barnes raise two hands, one for her and one for you. So, you're, you're next on the list, and then I have Senator Ogden.
Well, thank you very much, uh, and I have, I, I was gonna actually check, because my colleague here to my right told me that you're doing it in alphabetical order, so...
No, no, no. I, I did it based upon the order of people raising their. That was the comment? Yes. Yes.
For saving him, okay. But I was willing to wait, actually, you know, when you
But Senator Barnes did raise two hands.
But I would like to thank my colleague so much, I was, um, on the dentist's chair, so that's why I wasn't able to be here. I do have, um, a couple of amendments.
I'm sorry, Madam, Madam Speaker, there's a whole list of people who have more than one amendment. We, we're going by order of the list and presenting one at a time, then we're coming back.
Oh, okay, so...
So, choose your first one.
Choose my, uh, most important ones? Okay, um, what, what I have here is then, let me take the one that, um, it's the one where it says, "Add a new," I know, section 24, but it's not really a 24-
That would be, uh, just a technical amendment.
Because whatever you write, so it's just a new section, and, uh, it's, it calls for actually the, um, an attorney for the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse. That, you, do you have that copy? I don't wanna move forward until you pull out your copy.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Madam Speaker, as you know, we have a bill, or a, a law, that requires a, um, a subject matter to be presented on the budget that may not be absolutely related to the budget
Okay, so I guess this-
To have a public hearing.
So, this one is out. So, can I go on the next one?
Thank you.
And I won't appeal, I, I would like, I would honor my chair's decision.
All right, so that's not being presented.
So, and, and lose that one then. This one is, uh, actually, this was, um, a new section on the Budgetary Transfer Authority for Guam Department of Education, and you were going to do something, uh, with this, I understand, but I, I wanted to make sure, uh, what this is, is that the Superintendent of the Guam Department of Education may transfer funds from the appropriations made to Guam DOE within subject classes, except that no funds shall be transferred into Personnel Services category.
Okay.
I know you were gonna give them-
This would be in the admin provision.
Oh, in admin instead?
Yeah, because this would co- cover the, this budget cycle.
All right, so then I, that's down, so I, can I try one more time?
Yes, yes.
For another one? Thank you. Uh, okay, this, uh, is a, to add again, a new section, and it's on the program, we, we talked about this early, it's about program reporting requirements.
Oh, yes, that's fine.
And it's a, a general, a statement, but it'll say, A, the President of the University of Guam, the President of the Guam Community College, and the Director of the Guam Department of Labor shall transmit a report to the legislature and the Speaker no later than June 30. Now, this is not a quarterly thing, this is at the end of the year before we start the new budget year, uh, so that we can do some program planning here, uh, is that the actual number of program completers and/or certificates issued for each program, and the employment data for said program completer for the five years following completion of their respective programs, to include salary levels, job location, or whether the job is in the same field as the program. And B, the report mandated in this, uh, section A shall also be posted on each agency's respective website.
Okay. All right, this is part of the reporting requirements, and then this is an amendment to that. Any, uh, members of the body wish to speak on this? Senator Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I rise in full support of this amendment, and, um, if it was appropriate, I'd add myself as cosponsor to the amendment, I, I like it so much. It's, this is something that's very important to us, understanding where we invest the people's money, and making sure that the people get the results for their investment that they expect. And these reporting requirements and these, these reports are gonna be very important for us to find out how these job subsidy and job creation programs are actually functioning. Are we creating good middle-class jobs, uh, through these training programs? Are we creating jobs that families can live on? Or are we just subsidizing, uh, corporations and subsidizing their workforce at the people's expense? And one way or another, with good data, we can make good decisions, and this ensures good data. My only question, if the, if the maker of the amendment would yield, uh, to the question, and, does this allow the 20% reduction in does this allow the 20% reduction in salary for the directors if they don't make the timeline? Does this fall under that provision?
Senator Wampat?
No, Mr. Chairman, that was, that's a totally separate issue. This wants, this is just to address specifically the programs, programs that involve some type of a training. So I think there's a sep-, there used to be a separate-
That's a separate on the financial reports and so forth. So this does not apply.
Okay, then, then I would make a technical amendment that I would let the legal counsel insert the language, that if they don't submit the reports in time, they have to pay the 20% penalty of their salary, like it is for every other reporting requirement.
Okay, so there's an amendment to place the, or place the penalty of a 20% on the salary if they don't meet the reports. Do we want to be more specific on that? Senator Rector, why don't we just take a short recess?
Yeah, if we could just take a short recess on this, thank you.
All right, just a short recess while that amendment gets prepared. Second session, Senator Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After consulting with, with our, the good speaker and the maker of this amendment, I have decided to withdraw my amendment at this point, and as this being the first year of the program and a completely new reporting task, we want to make sure that everybody doesn't get hit with unknown factors like not having the appropriate software or other people not reporting to these directors in time. And we can always deal with this again in, in next year's budget if it becomes a problem. But right now, I stand in full support of this amendment as it stands, and I hope our colleagues will support the speaker in making of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the body? Senator Cabo?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, just looking at the amendment, I think it's a well-intended amendment, I'm not going to object to it, but I think the, when you look at the responsibility of the President of UOG, the President of GCC, Director of Department of Labor, and to submit a report for each year, one year later, for, for the actual number of program completers and/or certificates issued for each program, and employment data for said program completer for the five years following the completion of the respective programs, and that includes salary levels, job location, and whether the job is in the same field or program. You're looking five years, and for some of these programs, whatever it was, whether it was a refrigeration certificate at GCC, and once someone graduates from that, that school, then, of course, they go out and they sow their oats, and that means they could get employed at a, at a government job, which may be a little bit easier to track, but five years is a long time. And to try to, to track the movements of an individual in the course of five years after completion of a program, I'm not too sure whether that is actually something that is, can be done. Yes, and I'm, so I'm wondering, and I'm just looking at maybe if we could, if we're going to move on this direction, I think it's well-intended because it's important to get these statistics. There may be, and again, I'm going to, I'm going to throw it to the author of the amendment, maybe we should look at, at maybe reducing the number of years, maybe two years, and with that, you know, working with, with these agencies and working with the department, and even when it comes, like again, when it comes to, let's say, the University of Guam, they will have something within their, their, I don't know, because it couldn't, it's not only scholarships, but there may be some means of communicating with these, with these students after they've graduated, so we can keep track of them. I just think five years is a long time. In fact, I even think one or two years is a long time, but I'm wondering, maybe the, the author would, of the amendment would, would, would look towards making something more practical, and maybe, more practical would be maybe one or two years. Okay, and if that's the case, I will throw that out because I want to make this thing workable. So if I'm looking at making an amendment, and that would be on line one, two, three, four, five, on line five, data for said program completer for, and deleting five and placing two years following completion of the respective program. Maybe that's something a little bit more practical.
All right. Senator Cabo is, has made a motion to amend the Wampat amendment to change five years to two years. On that amendment by Senator Cabo, I have Senator Wampat and Senator Rector.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have really no objections to that. I'd just like to let you know that the whole purpose for this is that, you know, we invest a lot of money, you know, for our students in any of these programs, training programs or scholarships, and, you know, these, we think as legislators, that these are going to be well-invested monies for our children and our students, who then will have a, you know, a future. The, the other thing, however, that, you know, we've found is that there are students who have taken advantage of this program, but then do not follow through, do not enter and continue in the program that the government has invested in some of these individuals. And so what this is, is to be able to track whether, one, are they in the program? Do they continue with the program? So yes, five might be a bit long, two years, I think, would be adequate, and the reason why I say that as well is because many of the scholarships that we give now, and we're actually trying to fix that, all of it at one time to make it uniform, is that there is this payback, a service to the government. The other is, is that many of these institutions have actually said is that they really would like to be able to track their students. They want to be able to do a longitudinal study and collect the data so that they can plan for the future. And I'd just like to also let you know is that just last Saturday, we had our very first education summit, and one of the issues that we are addressing is actually longitudinal data. So the University of Guam, Guam Community College, and DOE, the Department of Labor, are all participating in this educational summit, and all have agreed that we need to do this longitudinal study and collect this longitudinal data, so we can track exactly where our students are at, where they're going, and how we're going to be able to transition them in from one level to the next level, so from school, elementary school, to higher institutions, and ultimately out to the workforce. So this is truly in line with even what we're doing with educational summit, and I have no objections to Senator Cabo's amending it then from five to two years. It'll give them an opportunity to be able to make sure that they do have the software. It makes it a little bit easier to start with one year, two years, and hopefully that might be able to do it for five years and 10 years, so they can have some better planning in terms of what the community needs. So I do support that amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Speaker Wampat, Senator Rector, on the Cabo amendment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to stand opposed to the, to the Cabo amendment. It's just, look, five years isn't, isn't that long a time, and Guam isn't that big a place. I mean, might there be some people they can't get a hold of? Of course. I mean, there's people that leave off island all the time, but even that's part of the data that would be collected, and it's important. I mean, it's not like we're living in central LA where there's 20 million people in the region that's hard to track folks. I, I think five years is a very reasonable time, time period, and I, and I think it will give us very valuable data with which to move forward on. So I stand opposed to it. I understand his concern, but I, I really think these, all of these institutions are quite equipped at keeping track of their, their alma, what do you call, their alumnis, and finding out where they are and what they're doing. I mean, I can keep track of my former students going back 20 years, darn near, so I'm sure these institutions will be able to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the body wish to speak? Senator Ogden on the Cabo amendment?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I guess my only concern and my only question is whether, in fact, there's already a mechanism in place to be able to track these individuals. I know that several years back, there were some concerns raised about, is there any tracking mechanism instituted at, at that time, it was an oversight hearing several years back on the Guam Community College, whether, in fact, they were tracking their alumni and seeing if, if, in fact, they ventured into the hotel and restaurant industry, the tourism industry. And at that time, there was no affirmative response as to whether, in fact, there was a tracking mechanism. So I'm certainly hopeful that, obviously, it's excellent information to have, readily available, so that, in fact, we understand the success rate of the respective programs within the University of Guam, Guam Community College, as well as the Guam Department of Labor, but I also, I'm hopeful that, in fact, there is a program in place. But on the amendment, I really have no problems with the, with the modification of the timeframe. I am familiar, though, with a education institution that I attended several years back, whereby every three years, I receive a survey that is tracking more or less exactly where I'm at, what I'm doing, and how I'm proceeding in terms of my career as it, as it dealt directly with the degree that I was able to acquire at that time. So there are mechanisms in place in other jurisdictions. I'm just hopeful that, in fact, it's, it's in place because this will be a mandate over at these institutions. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the body? If not, there was an objection to the Cabo amendment to change five years to two years, so I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of the amendment by Senator Cabo, please raise your hand. The amendment carries. The amendment as amended from Speaker Wampat, any other member of the body wish to speak on it? If not, is there any objection to the amendment as amended? No objections? The amendment carries. We now have Senator Ogden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if I can beg the indulgence of the chair yourself, as well as the members of the body, I do have an amendment that is being proffered to add a new section under the miscellaneous provisions, and I don't know if you would, it would constitute miscellaneous or administrative, but it would allow for the Judiciary of Guam to be able to carry over their unexpended resources from this fiscal year to the next fiscal year. So it would read the unexpended balance of the funds appropriated to the Judiciary of Guam for fiscal year, insert the word four, please, between Guam and fiscal, for fiscal year 2009 shall not lapse and is available to the Judiciary of Guam for expenditures in fiscal year 2010. So if I can request the indulgence and the concurrence of our colleagues to be able to accept this, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
All right, there's an amendment by Senator, I'll, I'll accept this amendment under the miscellaneous provisions, okay? The amendment by Senator Ogden is to add a new section, would read the unexpended balance of the funds appropriated to the Judiciary of Guam for FY 2009 shall not lapse and is available to the Judiciary of Guam for expenditures in FY 2010. Any objections? No objection? Amendment carries. Next, I have Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My amendment is to add a new section, again, under the miscellaneous provision for, of course, a continuing appropriation of the unexpended or unencumbered balance of funds appropriated to the Office of the Attorney General. For FY 2009, pursuant to public law 29129 shall not lapse and shall be available to the Office of the Attorney General, of course, for expenditure in FY 2010, for the purpose for which it was authorized. And this is, of course, the Blas, the Blas bill that became law with the $200,000. I understand 137,000 remaining, and we don't want to, we don't want that lapse. They already committed to pursuing, of course, the compact impact reimbursement recovery.
Oh, yes.
That's what it's about. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. On that amendment, Senator Blas? Oh, okay, all right. Any objection to the amendment? There is no objection? That amendment carries. Next, I have Senator Rector, you're on the list, up next. We're still on, yes, we're still on Chapter 12, and we're taking amendments being offered by members of the body, and we're going down the list. I have Senator Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to prefer the amendment, everybody should have a copy. It says sick leave for private sector employees, which has had a public hearing, and this was passed out, I guess, two days ago now.
All right, there's a motion by Senator Rector to add a new section to the miscellaneous provision, which would append and amend section 3105.1 of 22 GCA, reference to sick leave for private sector employees, although the matter may be unrelated to the budget, the matter has received a public hearing and meets requirements of law that they may be pursuant to a motion made on the floor. Any, we'll just, it, it is allowed to be germane since the bill has received a public hearing, and so it's allowed to be placed by the, but he had no hearing on that matter. Yeah. No, the, I know, but you were amending the statute, you had all these other amendments. There was a lot of wordsmithing in there for, for the chair's purposes, so.
Can I just ask a point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, switch your point of order.
The only thing is that you said that it had no implications on appropriations, right?
No, no, I said that the amendments that he was proposing on the bill did not have had, did not have a hearing on the amendments that he had, he was proposing on, that he was changing the bill that was passed, and he was making amendments to the bill that was passed, and those amendments had not had a hearing on those changes.
No, but what you said is that it didn't have implication, because there was no appropriation attached to it, so it did, it was-
But that was not the basis of my ruling.
That wasn't the basis of it?
No.
All right, well, okay.
The basis of my ruling was that the amendments that he was proposing had not had a hearing. Okay. So this is, this is clearly allowed, of course, in, in the, in the statutes that we have. Now, of course, there may be an objection to the motion to place it, and we would allow the motion to be made, and then if there's an objection to placing it, then that has to be voted by the body. So by the, by the way, the operation of the bill that was passed, I have to accept the motion as a proper motion. So that, that is where we're at on this. So I'm accepting Senator Rector's motion to append this and any member- So I'm accepting Senator Richter's motion to append this, and any member of the body may be free to object. Okay? So Senator Richter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The motion to place this bill as a new section under miscellaneous provision. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, it'll say sick leave for private sector employees on top, if everybody's looking for it.
This one.
Does everybody have a copy, or do we need to make some more?
Three pages?
Yeah, yeah, I've got a few.
Four pages. Okay. Senator Richter, you may speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is a very timely and important issue, and that's one of the reasons that I wanted to take this on to the floor now and deal with it as soon as possible. Even today, Public Health came out and stated that we have newly identified cases of swine flu. We are now up to 165 cases on our island, and school just started. This worries me, and it should worry everybody. It's a pandemic that's outbreaking and ready to happen. And the trick to the way you stop pandemic spread is to make sure the CDC recommends that people stay home, right? Don't go to the doctor, don't go to work, don't go to school, stay home. Instead of spreading it to your coworkers, instead of spreading it to your classmates, stay home. Now, in part of this bill, I have this up to seven days because that was the original CDC amendment, and I will make an amendment to change this. The CDC has, since writing this, has refined. If we go to page two in D, it says certification, and that should be amended to the new CDC recommendation, which is three consecutive days.
So where is that, Senator Richter?
It's on page two of the amendment, letter D, it says certification, and then it goes down to say in XS of three consecutive days of work.
So the amendment by Senator Richter would be on the second page of that, on line two under subsection D, change seven consecutive to two, or three?
Three. That's the new CDC recommendation.
On that amendment, no objections. That amendment carries.
And then in section four, on the very last page, it's the same number, back to three. It was seven, now it was three, and then this bill was going to amend it to seven, now it's back to three.
On that amendment, changing seven back to three on the last page, there's no objection? That amendment carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So let me summarize what this bill does very quickly, all right? Government of Guam employees, this body has decided that they have a certain rate of accumulating paid sick leave, which works out to about 13 days a year. Now, because in the private sector, not everybody's a full-time employee, and they work various hours and have various shifts, we took this down to half an hour for every 10 hours worked. So you accumulate, you accrue sick leave at the rate of one half hour for every 10 hours worked, but that's exactly the same rate per hour as Gov. Guam employees do. So this mirrors, for the private sector, the exact sick leave benefits that public employees have, and puts everybody on an even playing field, which is very important. And if I may, let me talk about why it's important. As I mentioned before, the CDC recommends that if you're sick, stay home. Don't go to the doctor and get a doctor's note, because then you'll infect everybody in the clinic. Stay home. And one of the things we found is that if workers don't have paid sick leave, they go to work anyway. Because if they say, well, if I don't go to work, I don't get paid, I'm going to go to work. I can't afford not to get paid. So they go. If a child is sick at home, but mom and dad can't afford, they can't afford daycare, or they don't have paid sick leave to stay at home with their child, they send their child to school. Oh, it's just the sniffles, off you go. But if they had paid sick leave and were able to stay at home with their child, they would be more apt to stay at home with their child and prevent the pandemic spread in our school system. So basically, that is what this bill does. It gives paid sick leave to private sector employees at exactly the same rate as Gov. Guam employees, and then it amends for Gov. Guam employees because there was a provision for government of Guam employees that was changed by previous legislatures, and this reverts it back to a good system. And I want to bring this out because it also goes to amend Section 3, subsection C of 4108, because the law was amended to say that an employee could only use their sick leave to stay at home for a family member as a result of a serious illness or injury, and the employee has exhausted all other annual and compensatory time off, and a serious illness or injury means urgent condition that is certified by an attending physician as requiring hospitalization, institutionalization, or extended home care in which a person needs constant administration of special medical care or support. What that means is that a mom can't stay home with her child when he's got the flu. And that just doesn't work out. It doesn't work out for anybody. People don't abuse their sick leave. Some might, some might not. But in general, nobody in this room has to get a note if they want to stay at home with their sick kid. Everybody deserves the same dignity and respect and be treated with the same dignity and respect, and this bill would protect our island, protect our families, protect our schools, and save us a whole heck of a lot of money on fighting, being proactive and preventing the spread of a pandemic flu, as opposed to being reactive and trying to contain something that's already spread out. Now, I know some people in the tourism business might have an issue with this and say, well, we can't afford to give our employees paid sick leave. And to that, I have to say, you can't afford not to. Imagine if you're a housekeeper in a hotel, and you go to work because you don't have paid sick leave, and you've got the pandemic flu, and you touch the 50 doorknobs and the elevator buttons as you go through your job, and then the tourist that come to these hotels gets sick as well, and they go back to Japan, spreading the pandemic flu. That will kill our tourism business, and it's just unacceptable. We need to make sure that we protect all of our people and our tourism industry from this outbreak. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I can appreciate the mover of this amendment, but, Mr. Chair, I read through this amendment, and I think I'm going to call for a need a ruling from the Chair with regards to, first off, recognition of public law 30-30 in regards to the conflict and some of the verbiage that's contained in this language. Mr. Chair, there may be a violation of that public law, if we could allow the good mover of the amendment to continue to proceed. And so looking for a ruling from the Chair as to whether or not he should continue to proceed, recognizing that there may be a violation of that public law. And the area, and as far as this, if you look on page, I guess it's on page two of this, and furthermore, recognizing what the mover of the amendment is as far as his other capacity other than Senator, and the references he makes to collective bargaining agreements and also sick leave with regards to government employees and stuff that does have a relationship with the union relationship with the government of Guam. And because public law 30-30 clearly states that any perceived conflict, in as far as conflict of interest, has to be reported, there is a reporting mechanism, there is certain steps that need to be taken so that that can be clarified and cleared. I don't know if this is in violation of that.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Senator Blas, the Chair is tasked with ruling on whether or not the motion is proper with regards to the standing rules as well as the statute. So the content, however, with regards to the conflict of interest, probably that kind of ruling would fall on the Speaker or other officer of the legislature. Definitely doesn't fall within the purview of the Appropriations Chair. I'm going to call for just a one-minute recess.
And again, Mr. Chair, it's in defense of my colleague. I don't want him to violate the law.
I understand. Senator Blas, if I may, the question you brought up, of course, is whether or not there's been compliance or conflicts with regards to public law 30-30, and that is Bill 81 as amended on the floor. The way that the Chair reads, basically, reads that bill, it requires disclosure. There's no action required by the legislature. It is the legislator's duty to declare financial interest, ownership, and the new subsection that was required was that the employees defined in this section shall have, based upon reasonable investigation, should know that an employee has a financial interest in any decision pending before the employer or the agency, in which the employee is a member, shall not vote or against, discuss or decide in any way, participate in considering the matter or seek influence, the votes or decisions thereof. And then prior to the determination of any manner, the employee shall verbally disclose at the meeting if any nature such interest shall have such disclosure placed in the official records. Should an employee be absent from that meeting? And then, of course, it requires that the disclosure of the conflict must be filed with the Guam Election Commission, within three working days, and the employees' recognition of said conflict. And then a legislator who casts a vote with respect to any bill in which the legislature has a financial, shall prepare written statement that identifies the bill, the legislature's vote, nature, et cetera, and that, again, shall be filed with the Office of the Speaker and a copy provided to the clerk. Then the Guam Election Commission shall be the depository of this. So the declaration of whether or not a conflict exists is a declaration that is made by the employee and by the Senator. We're going to request, I guess, the Senator, if, I'm going to ask if the Senator has reviewed 180 or is familiar with 180, and if he is, then I guess he's made this decision by making the presentation on this, that the requirements of Bill or public law 30-30 has been met, and he's decided to do so. If anybody disagrees with that decision, then I guess then that would need to be filed and challenged with the, most likely, the Office of the Speaker would have to be challenged officially. So Senator Richter, I'm going to ask you, when you introduced or presented Bill, the amendment on the floor, were you aware of the requirements of Bill 80 or public law 30-30?
Yes, I am.
And are you satisfied that you have complied with it?
Completely.
All right. Okay, we're going to proceed.
Mr. Chair, I think that the question needs to be asked, if the individual feels that there is a conflict.
I think that he has made that decision.
That was unclear, and I ask for that to be clarified. Specific question, does he perceive that there is a conflict of interest?
Senator Richter, would you yield to that question?
I do not believe that there is a conflict.
All right. Okay.
That believing and yes or no, sir, is, there are two different things. I think that this body desires and needs a definitive answer on this thing. I bring this, and maybe I should preface this, Mr. Chair, and as far as the conflict of interest, and maybe I can preface that question by asking a question if the individual would yield to the question, the question being, is the Guam Federation of Teachers, of which he is president of, in negotiation or has a contract with any private sector employer's group or any private sector business? Knowing full well, clearly, that this is a law that would basically dictate to the private sector, now what other, I guess, benefit, for lack of a better term, granted, it is a good one, but this dictates to the private sector as to what other benefit they must provide to their employee. And whether or not this was a point of contention, whether this was a bargaining unit, whether there's any type of agreement that this was made or this is proffered in his negotiations with the GFT with this private sector employing group or with any private sector group that the GFT currently represents.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may, when I raised my hand, that was to inquire about this specific thing, and if I could reserve my privilege to address this amendment, should it be allowed onto, and now I'll address that at a later time.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I may just ask a point of clarification before we do anything else? I just want to make sure.
May I have Senator Guthert's? Are you, are we rising to a point of information? Are we rising there? The amendment is that this, to add this bill to chapter twelve as a new section. Okay, that's the amendment.
Yes.
The question that Senator Ugon, I mean Senator Blas, raised with regards to the conflicts are all outside of the realm of that amendment, and really, I hate to say that, but there's another avenue to deal with that question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move that we act on the amendment now as presented.
Okay. Senator Barnes?
And my point of clarification and inquiry is that whether or not this body choose to object this amendment or not, there are still other avenues, as, as it was as introduced by, by, by resolution, or, I mean, introduced as a bill, it can come back in as a standalone bill, am I correct?
Yes, of course. Of course, it can be reported at our committee, presented to the Rules Committee.
So, that, the author of this amendment has that avenue to proceed for whether or not the decision on this amendment here today is made.
That's correct.
He can still carry it forward.
That is correct.
Thank you, I just wanted to make that.
According to the standing rules of the legislature. So, Senator Guthert, is your motion then to call for a vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my motion is to call for the vote, and I'd like to speak to the, to the amendment.
No, if you call for the vote, you don't speak on the amendment.
Can I speak first and then call for the vote?
You can speak first and then call for the vote.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. On the amendment itself, I, I'm sorry, I can't support the amendment, because I, I don't know if it's appropriate for us to dictate to the private sector sick leave policies beyond what is prescribed by our federal laws, our Department of Labor laws. And so, I can't support the amendment, and I'd like us to act on the amendment. Thank you.
All right. There's a call for the vote on the motion to place, to add a new section to chapter twelve of the bill, being the new section being what is presented by Senator Rector as the amendment, which is to add three one oh five point one of twenty-two GCA as, as part of the.
Point of information, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Senator.
When you say call, call for the vote, this is just to, to allow it to be discussed as an amendment?
No, no, it's being discussed now.
Oh, then I, I don't think it'd be proper to call for a vote unless we all have the opportunity to discuss the issues on the, on the amendment.
All right. I think Senator Guthert's intention was to call for the previous question.
Mr. Chair, can you please clarify what's going on?
I'm sorry. Senator Guthert, the proper motion would have been a call for the previous question. However, Senator Espodan did mention that he wanted to speak on the substance of the bill, and to, and the motion to place the bill, or that, well, on the amendment as a, as a new section. I'm going to allow Senator Espodan to speak on the substance of the amendment, which is, and, and that is to place the, to add this as a new section.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, in that, in that situation, then, I would like to turn to, have everybody, perhaps, take a look with me on page two, and I move to delete under section F, subsection F two, which basically states that special provisions, the generality of subsection A through F is subject to the following special provisions. Under two, it be notwithstanding any other provision of law, in the event of conflict, the provisions of this section shall be superseded by a valid collective bargaining agreement. Basically, we are saying that from now on, that would be the policy, that we're basically endorsing, going out, all the, the private sector to go out and have a valid collective bargaining agreement, specifically when dealing with this issue, and I'm not really sure I can endorse that at this point in time, so I move in a strike, section two, F two.
No objection. Okay. On the motion to strike subsection F two, no objections? Motion carries?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, on the third page, under section three, under subsection C two, in defining immediate family member, we have it saying it means the employee's spouse, comma, common law. Point of information is that we do not acknowledge common law marriages on the silence, so I move to delete common law.
There's a motion to amend the bill by striking common law on the third page of the bill, it's one, two, fourth line from the bottom. Any discussion on that motion? Senator Rector?
Yes, and, and I, I understand, I understand the movers', the movers' opinion on this. The problem is, is in, is in currently, this is, this is the language that's actually in code today. This isn't new language, except for where you see the underlines. So, what, if you, if you were to put this in, if we were to strike that language, we would be taking away rights that current GovGuam employees already have. While we might not legally address common law and understand it for everybody in our society, we do understand it and relate to it when it comes to sick leave for GovGuam employees.
Okay.
So, I have to object to the amendment in that case.
Okay, so, there's an objection? Any other discussion on removing, on the amendment to remove common law on the fourth line from the top, or from the bottom, I'm sorry? And that is, as clarified, existing language in law. So, Senator Espodan, on the, on your amendment?
I understand, yes, I understand what the good Senator is arguing, however, by us striking it now, at least we correct the law to reflect what is indeed our law, and it is not a recognition of a common law marriage.
Okay, so, on the motion to strike common law, there is an objection. I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor of the motion to strike common law, please raise your hand. Motion fails. All right. Senator Espodan, you still have the floor.
Yes, I would like to also move to delete, oh, excuse me, if, I would like to ask the, the author of this amendment if he would yield to a question concerning section two, subsection G.
Senator Rector, will you yield to the question?
Certainly.
Basically, this is where it says that any employer found guilty of violating this provision is subject to a fine. I guess the question is, found guilty by who?
It would be the Department of Labor that enforces this, and by a court of law, if it's a misdemeanor, as it says, and shall be guilty of a petty misdemeanor, that means it's a criminal action, it has to be enforced through the Attorney General's Office and the courts. You being the lawyer, I would bow to the, the Speaker of the Questions' expertise in this matter.
No, in fact, that's why I'm asking the question.
Okay. You may proceed, Senator Espodan?
Hmm, you can just give me a second.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman.
All right. We're just in a short recess, then.
Thank you.
I tell you.
Let's take a lunch. Maybe we can recess until.
All right, there's still some questions, then, and maybe members of the body may wish to additionally review this. I'm going to call, then, for a recess until three? Recession for lunch until 3:00 P.M. Yes, yes. On the amendment that was proposed by Senator Rector, and we'll continue discussion on that. The last amendment that was offered by Senator Espodan was to, you know, to delete common law on the fourth line, and that amendment failed. We had voted on that amendment, and so Senator Espodan still has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, just a point of information, Mr. Chairman, common law does not refer to, to a relationship. Common law is basically differentiated as opposed to statutory law, and that's why, again, we have, we have to make sure that, I mean, common law really doesn't belong in this context, because common law is basically law that was derived throughout the ages from English law, and has passed on, and has been, been accepted. So, it's not, you know, it really doesn't relate to a relationship, really, it's more of, it's, it's a distinguishment between common law and statutory law, which is written and enacted. But that being said, I just, that was just point of information, that's why I don't believe it belongs here at this point. But, that being said, Mr. Chairman, I, there was another thing I, I wanted to address, but before I did that, you know, during the lunch break, I started thinking about the whole issue on the conflict of interest, so I took your copy, I hope you don't mind, Mr. Chair, just to take a look at it and try to understand. And I don't believe, first of all, that I disclosed any financial interests I might have relative to this amendment, and so I'm looking to a ruling from the Chair, whether I can actually continue to speak on it. And the disclosure would be this, under the, the law, basically, financial interest means any interest held by an individual, his or her spouse, adopted, natural, or dependent children, parents, parents-in-law, siblings, or siblings-in-law, which is, which is an ownership and interest, a ownership interest in a business, creditor, da-da-da-da-da-da. The disclosure I have is that my wife does have a small business, she has a hair salon, and so she is a business owner, and she does have an employee. My brother also has a business interest, he, he runs Cold Stone and Wendy's, he has several employees, so again, under, under the letter of the law, I have a financial interest through my, or he, he has a financial interest, but because I'm his brother, I have to disclose that. And that would definitely disallow me from speaking on any issue related to any businesses, because that's exactly what this law says. I must also disclose that I have, I think, one share in a business interest that my mom has vested, my mother has vested in, and that one share is basically, was given to me to be able to represent her at, at the meetings of this particular business. But, again, if we look at the letter of the law concerning conflict of interest, that would then take me out of this discussion, and so with that, again, I look to you, not that I have any personal interest in these, aside from that one share that I described to you, but by the letter of the law, because my brothers or my, my siblings and my wife do have a business, I would be precluded from speaking on any issue in this amendment. I, I just want to, I just want to ask you, as Chairman, whether, if that is indeed the case? Because if that is the case, and I believe that other members throughout this legislature must disclose that, and cannot speak to this issue at all, and can take no action.
Point of increase, if I may?
All right. On the point of increase, Senator Palacios?
My understanding of what the Senator's talking about is actually, you can disclose, but, and, and that's all, and then nothing there prevents that the person disclosing from talking anyway. That's my understanding.
I think the, the law speaks to a little, goes a little further than that. So, if you.
So, I want, I want to understand that, then.
Yeah. All right. A recess while we seek counsel on the question being brought up. Yes, yes. On the amendment that was proposed by Senator Rector, and we'll continue discussion on The last amendment that was offered by Senator Espodan was to, you know, to delete common law on the fourth line, and that amendment failed. We had voted on that amendment, and so Senator Espodan still has the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, just a point of information, Mr. Chairman, common law does not refer to a relationship. Common law is basically differentiated as opposed to statutory law, and that's why, again, we have, we have to make sure that, I mean, common law really doesn't belong in this context, because common law is basically law that was derived throughout the ages from English law, and has passed on, and has been accepted. So, it's not, you know, it really doesn't relate to a relationship, really, it's more of, it's a distinguishment between common law and statutory law, which is written and enacted. But that being said, I just, that was just point of information, that's why I don't believe it belongs here at this point. But, that being said, Mr. Chairman, I, there was another thing I wanted to address, but before I did that, you know, during the lunch break, I started thinking about the whole issue on the conflict of interest, so I took your copy, I hope you don't mind, Mr. Chair, just to take a look at it and try to understand. And I don't believe, first of all, that I disclosed any financial interests I might have relative to this amendment, and so I'm looking to a ruling from the chair whether I can actually continue to speak on it. And the disclosure would be this, under the law, basically, financial interest means any interest held by an individual, his or her spouse, adopted, natural, or dependent children, parents, parents-in-law, siblings, or siblings-in-law, which is, which is an ownership and interest, a ownership interest in a business, credit, dah 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 dah. The disclosure I have is that my wife does have a small business, she has a hair salon, and so she is a business owner, and she does have an employee. Uh, my brother also has a business interest, he runs Cold Stone and Wendy's, he has several employees, so again, under, under the letter of the law, I have a financial interest through my, or he, he has a financial interest, but because I'm his brother, I have to disclose that. And that would definitely disallow me from speaking on any issue related to any businesses, because that's exactly what this law says. I must also disclose that I have, I think, one share in a business interest that my mom has vested, my mother has vested in, and that one share is basically, was given to me to be able to represent her at, at the meetings of this particular business. But, again, if we look at the letter of the law concerning conflict of interest, that would then take me out of this discussion, and so with that, again, I look to you, not that I have any personal interest in these, aside from that one share that I described to you, but by the letter of the law, because my brothers or my siblings and my wife do have a business, I would be precluded from speaking on any issue in this amendment.
Okay.
I just wanna, I just want to ask you, as chairman, whether, if that is indeed the case. Because if that is the case, and I believe that other members throughout this legislature must disclose that, and cannot speak to this issue at all, and can take no action.
What if increase, if I may?
Alright, on the point of increase, Senator Palacios?
Uh, my understanding of what the senator is talking about is actually, you can disclose, but, and that's all, and then nothing there prevents that the person disclosing from talking anyway. That's my understanding.
I think the law speaks to a little, goes a little further than that. So, if you...
So, I want, I want to understand that then.
Yeah. Alright, recess while we seek counsel on the question being brought up.
As regards to the actions of the validity, number one, the propriety of the actions. Number two, the prohibition against such action. And number three, the motivations of the member with regards to the action presented. They all relate to the amendment that has been presented by Senator Rector. And members are citing Public Law thirty dash thirty with regards to the prohibition against discussion, et cetera, as amended under fifteen two oh five, Chapter fifteen of Title Four subsection G, which says that a member shall not make, shall not vote for or against, it doesn't say member, it says employee, and of an agency. Number one, I believe that the legislature is not an agency of the government of Guam. Number two, that the legislator and their actions related to official functions within the legislative branch of government is different and not subject to that prohibition. Number three, if there is any prohibition on this, on the discussion, then it is nowhere in the statute where it allows this body to cease discussion on the matter being presented. The other applicable section, I think, of the law is, can be found with regards to the actions of the legislature in the carrying out of their official duties, may be found in four G C A, Chapter fifteen, fifteen subsection, or Section fifteen, two oh four, E. And this is under the fair treatment provision. And it says under that provision, no employee shall use or attempt to use the official position to secure or grant unwarranted privileges, exemptions, advantages, contracts, or treatment for himself or herself, a spouse, children, or others, including but not limited to the following, A, B, C, D, E. Subsection E of that section then states, nothing herein shall be construed to be, to prohibit a legislator from introducing bills, resolutions, serving on committees, or making statements, or taking action in the exercise of the legislative functions. Every legislature shall file with the Guam Ethics Commission a full and complete public disclosure of the nature and extent of the legislature's interests on any legislative transaction which primarily affects only the legislator, or the legislators involved, or their spouses, and not the community as a whole or a segment thereof. Disclosure must be made at a time of introduction of such legislation, or when the legislature shall first have knowledge of such legislation. In that regard, I think that the legislation being introduced by Senator Rector, if read against this statute, is proper and not out of order, and does not run in conflict with Public Law thirty dash thirty. The other thing I want to caution the body is, we are throwing around these issues of conflicts of interest, right and left, and every member should be prepared to back up any of those allegations. And when you want to charge a member of a conflict of interest, there is, in the statutes and in our standing rules, an ethics standards, and code of behavior, and a code of ethical conduct in the standing rules that govern the behavior of members of this body. If a member of this body feels that anyone has violated that ethical standard set up in our standing rules, it would then be proper for any member to file that complaint with a proper legislative officer. And in this case, it would be, put it in writing, send it to the speaker, and the body has, and I see the speaker, if you don't recognize her, she just raised her hand. And then, and then the body has a mechanism for dealing with any complaint lodged against a member, in which that member is charged with violating the code of ethics of this legislative body. The other thing I want to confine ourselves to, ladies and gentlemen, is a member, a portion of the Mason standing rules, which state in Section one two oh four, personalities not permitted in debate. And it says in here, that in a debate, a member must confine remarks to the question before the House, and avoid personalities. A member, in referring to another member, should avoid using the member's name, rather than identifying that member by district, by seat, as the member who last spoke, or by describing the member in some other manner. It is the person, it is not the person, but the measure that is the subject of the debate. It is not, and it is not allowable to arraign the motives of a member, but the nature or consequences of a measure may be condemned in strongest terms. So, please, ladies and gentlemen, we have had a very good and vigorous discussion and debate, and I think every member has participated to the fullest, and I certainly appreciate everyone in how they have conducted themselves during this budget process. And I want to commend you and express to you, in my most humble way, my deepest thanks for proceeding in that manner. And it has been through your cooperation that we have been able to conduct this session in such a manner that I think has, is befitting of the stature of this body. And let us continue in that manner, and I plead with you for your continued cooperation, and plead with you to continue in the manner that we have been proceeding so far, and let us debate the issues that are presented before all of us. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, I think that the way that this body has conducted itself in this budget session so far, has definitely contributed to the stature of this body, and I thank all of you for your cooperation, and seek your continued cooperation. Senator Espodan, you still have the floor there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Chair, just for a point of clarification or point of information, then you're, in essence, saying that Public Law thirty dash thirty, or thirty thirty, does not apply to this body?
I'm saying that if it is applied, it is up to the member to read this, apply it to himself, and cease. If a member of this body feels that it, that action of that member is not consistent with the law, then I think that that member may seek an action, but it's not up to this, it is not this chair that makes that determination at this time.
Okay. Well, at the risk that everything that I've contributed, at least to this point, will not be stricken, with the prospect that it possibly could be stricken, if that thing is made, then all actions that we have taken, again, I'm just saying that all, there's the potential that all actions that this body has taken to date could be ruled null and void. But that being said, then if I may continue, according to your ruling, then I would also like to turn your attention, Madam, excuse me, not Madam, Mr. Chairman, to page three, under Section three, subsection two, C two, and at the very end, when it is describing immediate family members?
Yes.
It basically has, at the very last word, or two words, it has "or other." I'm not really sure that has any real definition, or other, or other could be friend or anything else, so I move to strike the two words, "or other."
There is a amendment on the floor by Senator Espodan, and that would be on the third, on the third page, correct?
Yes, sir, under Section three.
Right. And it's after the word "local," local parentheses?
Parentis.
Parentis.
And even that, I'd have to get a definition of that after, after that, but my motion right now is to strike the words, yes, after "local parentis," the words "or other."
All right. On the amendment by Senator Espodan, and that would be on the third page, at the last line, to strike "or other," is there any objection to that amendment? All right? No objection? The amendment carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And then also, if the mover of the amendment could, would yield to a question, and this is basically in terms of "local parentis," I just want to make sure I understand what "local parentis" is.
Okay. Senator Rector, will you yield to that question?
Yes. This is, once again, this is already established in the, in the code, and I believe, it is my understanding that in "local parentis" would mean a temporary guardian of a child. Parents, if mom and dad are off island, and auntie's in charge, and the parents write a letter to the auntie saying, you're in custody of my kid while I'm away. That would be in "local parentis," is my understanding.
Okay. Senator Espodan?
Okay. Let me see. I think for now, that's, that's all I have to contribute, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Espodan. Any other discussion, then, on the amendment as offered by Senator Rector? I have Senator Blas, and then Senator Uggan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Senator Guthers, you had your, I'm looking at the list here, and you were on the list to talk on this amendment? Oh, that's right, and you withdrew that. Okay. Senator Blas?
Actually, then, Mr. Chair, I also like to rise to a point of information here, Mr. Chair. And I don't mean to flog, for lack of a better term, a dead horse. And I appreciate the determination that you had, and I, I also agree that it's not in your purview to rule in any matters to whether or not any conflict exists within the individuals that are, any one of us, but, and it has to be done otherwise. I do need to point out, though, Mr. Chair, that in your reference to employee, if you can, and if you recall, and if you're looking at Public Law thirty dash thirty, the, thirty dash thirty added to the existing law, then the existing sections in sparse, Section one five two zero five, to include definitions, in that same area, in that same place, in Section fifteen two zero five, employee means any nominated, appointed, or elected officer or individual employee with a territory agency as defined herein, including members of boards or commissions persons under personal services contracts. I need to refer then also, and also agree with the good gentleman from Muning, that we, through Public Law thirty dash thirty, I need to reiterate this, that it-
Senator, Senator Blas?
This is a point of information, sir. I'm rising to a point of information on this.
Well, the point of information then should be confined to the matter before the floor of the legislature. And the matter before the legislature is the amendment being offered by Senator Rector to add a new Section three one oh five point one of twenty-two G C A to Chapter twelve of Bill fifty-eight.
Okay. Then, Mr. Chair, then I'm going to ask, request that, based on Public Law thirty dash thirty, and it may, there may be a perceived conflict of interest, recognizing that the opinion that you have provided, I mean, it's just that it basically, it's not so much a ruling, but, or a ruling from the chair, I am very much concerned and with Public Law thirty dash thirty, and would probably suggest that an opinion be provided by the Attorney General herself, on whether or not thirty dash thirty will, does pose, or the provisions within thirty dash thirty actually pose the conflict that we're concerned about.
I suggest you start writing that letter. But Senator, again, if you are concerned about that-
Yes. Yes.
-then I, I would suggest that you bring the matter before the Attorney General.
And I will.
Yes, okay.
Okay? Now, that said, Mr. Chair.
Yes. That said-
That said, recognizing that, I ask then to beg the indulgence of the chair, that my contribution to this conversation then, wait until I get that opinion back from the Attorney General. That letter is being drafted as we speak right now.
All right.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Any other member? Then I have Senator Uggan on the amendment by Senator Rector.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for, for highlighting the positions of, and the positions you've taken a little earlier. Mr. Speaker, on the, on the amendment, I just have a few general inquiries, and if the sponsor of the amendment can yield, please-
Senator Rector, will you yield to the question?
Yes, I would.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Senator Rector. You know, as I read this sick leave for private sector employees, subsection A, it says accrue sick leave on line two, and then I'm trying to follow it through to special provisions, and it doesn't relate to paid sick leave on subsection A, and if that's the intent, is that consistent with the special provisions? I mean, am I supposed to look at it from, as one entire section whereby sub number one in section F relates back to section A? Does that make sense, Mr. Speaker, Senator Rector, in terms of looking at this because I'm reading it? Employees occupied positions with any employer shall, as a minimum standard, accrue sick leave at the rate of, and my question is, would it be paid sick leave or unpaid sick leave? And the reason I bring this up, Mr. Speaker, in this case, and good senators that sponsor the amendment, is because there's also a family leave act that was adopted under the President Clinton administration, I believe, which provides any and all individuals within a private company or a public entity the opportunity to take advantage of leave up to six months. And that individual, based on that federal statute, my question would be in line with, how would this complement or add to the Family Leave Act which has passed? And it, and to me, based on how it's been implemented in certain familial circumstances, very close to me over the course of the past several years, I'm of the opinion that perhaps that, that federal statute already addresses some of the biggest concerns that, that are incorporated in this legislation. But that's, that's really where I have a conflicting view as to how would I view this amendment versus what's already qualified in the federal statute, the Family Leave Act? So, please, Mr. Speaker, and the good senator, the sponsor of the amendment, if I can just get a little bit of clarification on that, so that I feel, I would feel more comfortable in terms of establishing a position as it relates to the amendment, if the sponsor of the amendment is familiar with the Family Leave Act.
Senator Rector, are you willing to yield to the question?
Thank you. Yes, I am. I'm quite familiar with FMLA, and quite proud of President Clinton when he passed it, and changed families all across our, our country, allowing relatives to take care of sick relatives. The difference between the Family Medical Leave Act and this act is that this is sick leave with pay. And it's defined as sick leave with pay, and if, and it goes through later on how it's, when allowed, sick leave with a pay is allowed, blah, blah, blah. But if, if the, if it make the, the person, the good senator from Johnian, more comfortable, we should put shall accrue sick leave with pay at a rate of yada, yada, yada. We can insert the words "with pay," but that's the intent of it.
All right. Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, and, and thank you very much to the good sponsor of the amendment. Just a few other questions, and, and thank you for that clarification in terms of sick leave. The recommendation by the sponsor of the amendment would be with pay, and I'll leave that to his consideration as a sponsor of the amendment. Now, moving on, Mr. Speaker, as it relates to page three on subsection G, which imposes fines and penalties on an employer, looking at the, I guess, implementation of a $500 fine or a $1,000 fine, based on where this would be inserted into the code, which entity would be responsible for enforcing and carrying out this provision?
Senator Rector, will you yield to that question again?
Please, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, I believe we already addressed this.
Oh, I apologize.
Most labor investigations go through the Department of Labor, but they're enforced by the Attorney General's office, and taken to court if it's a misdemeanor, would be my understanding.
Okay, so basically, if I, if I may, Mr. Speaker-
Yes, you may.
-continue with that. Basically, this code will fall under the code of the Department of Labor, which would continue to maintain oversight over labor issues, and then the imposition of these fines would obviously be subject to prosecution.
Yes.
Through the agent's office. Okay. And then, looking at Section 4, I know that the sponsor of the amendment is proposing to delete the last line, and it reads, "The department head may require certification for such other period as is appropriate." I'm trying to figure out and get a good, better understanding as to why that provision would be deleted, because it does provide for at least additional oversight in terms of ensuring the certification of an individual who is ill. So, if I can just post that again, Mr. Speaker, please, to the sponsor of the amendment.
Senator Rector, will you?
Yes, thank you very much. And, and that's a good question. The problem is, is how we've seen this applied, currently, this is how it reads in the code, "The department head may require certification for such other period as appropriate." It's not defined, and we found that, that different people within the public structure interpreted differently, and some, some department heads believe that they can just require a doctor's note at any time, and some have actually gone forth and required employees to always give a doctor's note whenever they're absent. And to clear up that, that clarification, we, we took it out, because that, that has never been the intent of the law, it doesn't make any sense in conjunction with the rest of the law, and we wanted to make sure it was clear, and that department heads couldn't use this provision to inappropriately demand stuff from one employee that we wouldn't demand from all employees, because it has been used as a penalty in the government of Guam. So, that's the reason. Thank you.
Thank you very much to the good senator. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, looking at this particular amendment, at the impact that it would have on the lives of many of our people, at first glance, it certainly is something that, from a person perspective and a family perspective, you know, at least from my angle, it's looking at it and saying, you know, this is, this is absolutely a good idea, to be able to allow the opportunity for individuals to be able to accrue sick leave. But then, looking at some of these provisions, as it applies to the accumulation, and then the accumulation succeeding leave years without limitation, the carryover provision, as it applies to private sector, there, it does leave some concern or some reservation on my part as to how to approach this so that in fact, it accomplishes the objective, but does not unnecessarily impose tremendous burden on the operations, especially of the small businesses. Because in many instances, we have small businesses that operate on the premise of having two, or three, or four, or five employees, and no more. Even losing one individual, with the exception of immediate illness or illness to an immediate family member for an extended period of time, certainly can impose some tremendous restrictions on the operations of that business. So, I do, I'm still in the process, Mr. Speaker, of formulating an opinion in terms of how I would like to vote on this, understanding full well that it's an idea that perhaps could be consistent with the Family Medical Leave Act, which was sponsored and is a federal statute, and which I feel perhaps already provides a tremendous amount of support for individuals who experience illnesses directly or with immediate family members, and give them that opportunity up to six months to be able to be dismissed without losing their job or their employment. So, Mr. Speaker, I thank you very much for the opportunity to comment on this amendment, and most especially for the sponsor of the amendment to respond to some of my inquiries. This is my submission, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. Senator Calvall? On the amendment?
Just because, Mr. Speaker, it may or may not apply, but I want to play the, be just very cautious about it. Again, and this has just come about as a result of the discussions based on public law thirty dash thirty, so I'm just going to disclose that I do have parents, siblings, in-laws, and extended family that are positions of management and ownership in the private sector, and I just want to state that as an official disclosure. And again, I, I'm trying to review thirty thirty, but I just want to play it safe. So, Mr. Chair, I'm making that public disclosure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, but no comment on the amendment?
Absolutely no comment whatsoever.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment by Senator Rector? Yes. Senator Tidaway?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I looked at the amendment, there's some good parts in it, and there's also some very questionable parts. You know, our country is made up with almost the majority of it being small businesses. And with the impact that this has with small businesses, as, oh, by the way, am I supposed to do thirty dash thirty? I have no children who are working, you know, in a job here. My father is retired, my sisters are not here, except one who's not working, unfortunately. But, so, there's nothing to disclose in that manner. So, I do want to say that this is going to affect, affect the small businesses, the backbone of our country, our island, you know, and in the states. You know, people who have less than 100 employees in their, in their employment, this will be detrimental to them. They're going to have to lay off people, you know, to be able to cover these. Now, it is important to give these people sick leave, and they usually do it on a case-to-case basis, someone in it, you know, being able to, to take the place of another person. But, you know, Mr. Speaker, I, I don't know if there has been an objection to this amendment, but, and, and being that this is going to definitely affect a lot of the small businesses on this island, and, once again, there are many of them out there trying to make it. And to have this mandated upon the, the private sector to do something like this is detrimental, you know, and it's catastrophic for most of them, they're going to have to shut down their business. So, I don't know if there was an objection earlier, but to this amendment, so I'd like to object to his amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Tidaway. Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, just disclosure, based on what I heard with your interpretation, that while this bill, if it's passed, it will benefit some employees of a family, business of a family with whom I'm associated. But my participation in the discussion and disposition of this bill is in its general application throughout the government of Guam employees and throughout the private sector.
That's correct.
And not just for the 60 employees of this particular business. This bill has nothing to do with the 60 employees. It has to do with all employees within the government of Guam and the private sector, except, of course, the federal employees.
That's correct.
And that's my participation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Senator Rector, would you like to close then on your, if no further comment from any member? Senator Rector, you may close on your amendment.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Let, let me address a couple of the issues that were brought up. The, first off, the question of the burden on a small business. As folks know, I am the president of GFT, and have been so for about five years, and I'm incredibly proud to say that I get to represent working people. And it is a small business where we have about six employees. Every employee of, of the GFT has exactly these same benefits, because their benefits mirror Guam's benefits. Our business was able to do it. We're able to keep the doors open and represent workers all across the island. So, I suppose that other good businesses, because in the private sector, they're so much better at running businesses than, than former teachers and chemistry guys such as myself. So, I figure if we can do it, all the other talented small businesses are doing it. But where we have, where we have issues, is sometimes we forget, the 60,000 people that work on Guam, the majority of which earn $10 an hour or less, the mothers, the fathers, the sons, the daughters, the uncles, the working people, whose lives this will make a difference in. That's what we need to talk about. Small businesses will survive, they won't lay off people, that just never happens. We, history proves it in Guam's code, and if you look it up, we can look at the stats. So, the chicken little arguments that the sky's going to fall and the economies are going to go into the ground just aren't true. And they don't, they're not true, and they hold true in other areas of the country, they have mandatory sick leave laws, and in other countries which have mandatory sick leave laws. This is about making life right for our families. This is about a mom being able to call in sick if she wakes up and her child's throwing up. This is about a dad being able to take care of his sick wife. This is about a son being able to take care of his sick mother. This is about making people's lives better. I ask all of my colleagues to think about all of their relatives and all of their friends that work for a living, and how often they need to call in sick. I ask them this one time, to do something to improve the quality of life for the 40,000 private sector employees on Guam. This is a chance for all of us to do something incredibly great, to improve 40,000 families' lives. Think about it. How many other people in their lifetime have an opportunity to improve the quality of life for 40,000 families? Well, my brothers and sisters, this is our opportunity, right now, right here, today. Mr. Chair, I call for a roll call vote on this, please.
There's an objection to the roll call vote. All in favor of a roll call vote, raise your hand. Motion fails. On the amendment as presented by Senator Rector with the amendments intact, presented by other members of the body, most notably Senator Espodan, who made some amendments, all in favor of the Rector amendment, please raise your hand. Amendment fails. Okay, I have Senator Tenorio on any new amendments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, there's an amendment that has an author's note. This will add a new section. It is entitled, "Exception for Internet and Data Network and Wireless Non-Mobile Telephone Services." This provision was already in the budget, it's a matter of fact, it's in the budget for this fiscal year. I am asking that it be included as a amendment to this fiscal year, or just be upcoming 2010, that is. And what it says is, "The restrictions on funds for wireless telephone services contained in Section 24," which we just finished talking about, and you asked me to waive off of, basically, "This chapter shall not apply to wireless internet and data network services, voice over internet protocol, wireless local loop, stationary, non-mobile wireless phone system, telephone services." Mr. Chair, this basically deals with the data, ability to have contracts. There's a number of contracts I know that exist in our government for people who have BlackBerry or other wireless data services, and this is already existing in current budget act, but it wasn't carried over in the, the version that you reported out to the, to the body. So, I'm asking that we allow for the same, and we'll go ahead and have a public hearing on the other thing before we go down the cellular phone services, but this one will allow for internet and data network for wireless non-mobile telephone services.
Senator, how is this different from the one you withdrew?
The one that I withdrew talked about actual services, in other words, wireless telephone services, cellular plans. This only allows for data. This is all this allows for. So, the BlackBerry and receiving and sending communications by way of BlackBerry Communications, wireless data, that's effectively what this is. So, it allows for many of our managers throughout our government and people who have wireless data to be able to send and receive emails, to be able to correspond through our government using what effectively is called data network services. And that's available through most of the services that are offered now.
But it's still telephone. I mean, well, how are they going to send it? I mean, well, how are they going to send it? Telephone?
Correct.
Correct. On their personal telephone? We were able to find, as you pointed out correctly, we were able to find it in the previous budget bill, it was in Section 82. So, I'm going to rule that then this could be presented based upon the presentation of the wireless section. Any objection to inclusion of this in the, as an amendment? No objections? What's that? All right. There's an objection by Senator Rector. Okay. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. All right. We're now back. Any other member of the body who has an amendment that has not been able to make a presentation yet from the first go around? No, you're, you're... Yes, I know, you're at the top of the list for this first round. Senator Espisho, you're, you're going to stay in line?
Yes, same order.
I'm just saying, anybody that has not presented one, that has one. Yes. Okay. Twelve, twelve. Yes. So, I had several here. Okay. But those are mostly technical. I'm going to ask then, so, Senator Tenorio, okay. I'm going to go back then to Senator Arad. Is everybody in line? Okay. No, you're after Senator Muñoz, you're after Senator... No, you're still on the list. Oh.
So, can I inquire? Your amendments have been passed out, and you have not made any presentation yet under, on, on Chapter 12. And I'm waiting, of course.
Yes.
Are you going to take your turn?
Yes, just, I'm going to ask my colleague Senator Ogden to present.
No, no, that's... Okay.
Senator Ogden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and Mr. Speaker, thank you. And I am now stepping out of line to our colleagues just to clarify things. This is on behalf of Speaker Ben, the chair of the committee. He has a amendment that has been circulated, and it's entitled "Continuing Appropriation for Law Enforcement and Public Safety Officers." And this is to add a new section to Chapter 12, miscellaneous provisions. And it, the gist of this is, it would require DOA and BBMR to reconcile the expenses of the appropriations made under Public Law 29 that's 105, and then also allow for the unexpendable and unencumbered balances shall be made available to the respective agencies for fiscal year 2010 until fully expended for the purpose intended herein. So, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move for the adoption of this amendment, please.
On that amendment, very briefly, it's the amendment that was made for the first 10%. If not fully expended, will be carried over for this second 10%. Any objection to the amendment? No objections. The amendment carries. We're back to Senator Arad then on the list.
Mr. Chairman, I am coming back on my second round to try again for... I have an amendment here that I've passed to everyone. It has to do with the short-term borrowing, an amendment to the, an existing law related to the short-term borrowing authorization for the Guam Water Works. And I've, I've, I've got, well, I've got, I've got an amendment that I've got to make to that. But basically, what it is, is, if you recall, and it is a, an amendment seeking to authorize the Guam Water Wer... Oh, let me first qualify this. This matter has had a public hearing.
Okay.
And is getting ready to be reported out, but I, I thought, we'll try here again. What the amendment seeks to do is to authorize the Guam Water Works authority to, in addition going out and borrowing, but also to enable it to pursue the lines of credit as a tool to be able to get the capital that it needs. The current law restricts the borrowing, short-term borrowing, for up to five years. The amendment here is seeking to allow them to seek for short-term borrowing up to 10 years in the event that a lending agency is willing to give a loan for up to 10 years. In addition to that, the current law limits the amount of the short-term borrowing to $5 million, and the amendment is seeking to, to increase that authorization level to $30 million. The reason for the $30 million is to enable to position the Guam Water Works authority to be able to go out to the bond market to get a long-term loan. But before you can do that, it has to, it has to put money into a reserve account, which will, which will require about $22 million. The remaining $8 million is required to enable Guam Water Works to begin projects, which we, the legislature had termed in December of 2008 as moratorium projects. If you recall, this was the situation in Tamuning where the CCU basically said, "No more developments will come online because we need to upgrade our sewer lines." And that was termed as the moratorium projects. The legislature deemed it an emergency and authorized Guam Water Works to go out and fast-track the contracting for these projects. The Guam Water Works did just that. They have gotten a contractor, they have selected a contractor to be able to start on these projects, but have not been able to get, they, they need this short-term loan of the additional $8 million to be able to begin those projects. And so, that's the reason for the additional $8 million. That line 15 and 16, that shouldn't have been there, that should be struck out. And now, on page two, it looks like totally new language, and what it is, is that...
Senator Arad, if I may just understand.
Yes.
Line 15 and 16 on page one?
Yes.
The underlying language notwithstanding?
It should be deleted.
So, you're making a motion to delete that as presented here?
Well, first of all, I need for the chairman to rule whether this will be eligible to be...
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, because I know he would have, I, I, you know, the chairman is on the ball, and I know that he'll come back and he'll, so before we get too far into that.
I, I think, I think the magic word was, "It has received a public hearing."
It has received a public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
And it meets the test. So, I will accept your motion as being in order to place this as an amendment to Bill 58.
Okay.
And there, there any objection? Okay, continue, Senator Arad then.
On, on page two, I just want to explain that all that is new language that's actually going to be made a part of the existing law. And really, when you take a look at that, that is the bond council's legal language, which again, just repeats everything that the legislature pursuant to earlier law agrees to increase the debt ceiling and, and to $30 million, and, and authorizes the legislature or GWA to go out and get a debt to mature not later than 10 years. So, all, all that really does is repeats in legal language as recommended by bond council to further reinforce the legislature's actions in changing the current law.
All right. So, did you want to make then your amendment to strike 15 and 16?
Well, no, I, um...
Oh, you want to leave it in there?
I, I like to leave it in there.
Okay. All right. Discussion on the Senator, on the Arad amendment, I have Senator Ogden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Like the sponsor of the amendment, I just would like to, first of all, provide some comments as the oversight entity that had conducted the hearing on this particular legislation. And the public hearing was conducted on Tuesday, July 28th, here at the public hearing room. But in terms of the, the request, Mr. Speaker, there's a couple of things that I think needs to be brought to light in terms of the short-term borrowing. First and foremost, GWA, like the good sponsor of the amendment, had alluded to a little earlier, needs to meet a particular financing set aside reserve requirement to be able to look at the possibility of six, five or six or seven months down the road, going to the bond market and being able to acquire the bigger dollars, so that in fact, they can continue to proceed with the capital improvement projects. Well, this is an amendment, half of the legislation that was entertained during the public hearing, and as the chair of the committee, I recommended to the good senator to consider the possibility of five, six months down the road, coming back and revisiting the long-term borrowing component, only because I think that our people need that, that sense of assurance in terms of the financial viability of GWA in terms of going to the market. And I say that with the, with having consulted and discussed the financial matters to some degree, not only representatives of GWA, but also representatives from their financial advisor. But this amendment, Mr. Speaker, would certainly grant the opportunity for GWA to go out, and I know it's perhaps a repetition of what has just been shared, but the opportunity to be able to go out and acquire $30 million or up to $30 million in short-term financing. There is, before GWA even decides to venture into going into the bond market, they need an absolute reserve, which is required, was required by the previous bond. If you recall, several years back, there was an authorization to go out and borrow $107 million, of which GWA was successful in acquiring. Well, one of those provisions requires that in fact, GWA set aside proceeds in the amount of $22 million. That's where part of this requirement comes in. The additional $8 million, I think the good sponsor of the amendment had already shared with us in terms of being able to address some of their CIP, short-term CIP projects. It's, I find it necessary, having had the, the opportunity to hear some of the comments from GWA representatives, as well as the financial advisor, that in fact, being able to give GWA this flexibility is necessary, so that in fact, in fact, they can proceed with some of the items that they have highlighted. Let me also add to this part of the conversation, because there's a five-year rate structure that was adopted by the CUC, I'm sorry, by the PUC in July, of which on August 1st, there was a 14.5%, I believe, rate adjustment that was implemented to be able to assist GWA in acquiring some of the additional reserves, and also to increase their cash flow and allow them, grant them more operational flexibility, and ultimately to enter to the bond market. Well, that's what they're looking at right now. They meet the reserve requirement, they're able to go out there with the short-term moratorium project, projects and comply or complete those particular projects that are necessary, and that have restricted timelines based on some of the court requirements. Then, they can, at a later time, and the, based on the financial advisor, they recommend it possibly latter part of December, or latter part of this year, if not early part of next year, to consider the possibility of having that flexibility to go out into the bond market. So, this is certainly going to be phase one of a financial structure, moving on to phase two later on down the road in terms of allowing GWA to go for the much larger sums of money through the bond market. So, I ask, Mr. Speaker, and all of our colleagues, to seriously consider providing GWA this opportunity to be able to acquire the short-term financing, and hopefully assist them, so that their finances, their financial historical data can be sellable, if there's such a word, sellable over the course of the next several months, so that they can acquire additional funds through the bond market. So, that's just a little bit of historical data, information in terms of the requirement, in terms of how the proceeds will be utilized, and also in terms of why the rate structure was adopted, so that in fact, it will provide some additional cash flow for one of our critical utility agencies in assisting them in their operations, and also meeting some short-term as well as longer-term CIP project requirements. So, Mr. Speaker, I ask, I request and urge you, in conjunction with the, the sponsor of the amendment, to, and our colleagues, to seriously consider granting this opportunity to insert not only this, this amendment into the legislation, into Bill Number 58, but allow GWA that flexibility. This is my summary, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Any other member wish to speak on the Arad amendment? If not, is there any objection to the amendment? No objections? The amendment carries. We are now back to Senator Munia Barnes. Just for your information, I think the Xerox machine is going to break pretty soon, so get all your amendments done. Please, no more. Thank you, Senator Munia Barnes.
Speaker Pangolin, and Mr. Chair, if I may, my, my amendments are on the administrative provisions. I did have my...
Oh, the administrative?
Right. On, on Chapter 13.
All right.
I have two, and then I have two for Senator Wampat, but so I don't have, right, so...
Okay. So, I have Senator Espisho then? Did he have a... Okay. Oh, no. I got, yes, this is the one. Senator Espisho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is...
Ms. Chairman, this is a companion amendment, an amendment we passed earlier, and this was Section 3 of Bill 109 that was publicly heard, and this amendment would make the effective date of Section 26 retroactive to October 1st of 2008. And Section 26, again, is a section that would extend the law enforcement issue to the commodity inspectors and the ethnomologists.
All right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any objection to the amendment? No objection, no amendments to the amendment?
No.
Yes. The amendment carries. We have next, Senator, Speaker Wampat, I'm sorry. Senator Barnes, did you want to present that for? The one I have here is a transfer authority for, oh, that would be the, that would be Chapter 13, right, okay. Senator Ogden, did you have another amendment in this section?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I have an amendment that was jointly, is jointly sponsored by our good colleague, the, our good colleague, I'm trying to refrain from mentioning his name, but the former chair, by virtue of what you read, Mr. Speaker, earlier, but the former chair, chairman of the Judiciary Committee, and also our good colleague from Tamouni.
Are you presenting this?
Yes. Mr. Speaker, this is an amendment that is reflective of Bill Number 100, which was publicly heard, and I want to thank you, Mr. Speaker, for having the public hearing on July 7th. It was conducted by your committee and with the rightful oversight, and this is basically to add a new section to Chapter 12, a new Section 22111, is hereby added to Chapter 22 of Title V Guam Code annotated as follows, and it will read, subsection 22111, direct deposit of judiciary appropriations. Subsection A, with respected appropriations by Elisa Turen Guahan for the operations of the judiciary of Guam, for any fiscal year, the director of administration shall deposit on the last day of each month into a bank account designated by the judiciary, a sum from the prior month's general fund revenue collections equal to the percentage of the judiciary's budget for the fiscal year relative to the entire general fund budget for the same fiscal year, provided however, that the deposits for the fiscal year should not exceed the total amount appropriated by Elisa Turen Guahan for the fiscal year, plus any appropriation to the judiciary from prior fiscal years which have not previously been received by the judiciary. It shall be a ministerial duty of the DOA to make the monthly deposits to the judiciary of Guam as required by this act. It also has subsection two, reporting requirements, and then also the effective date. Mr. Speaker, I want to thank again our colleague for co-sponsoring this, and most especially your committee for having conducted the oversight hearing and also having received...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I can't hear the speaker. Could I call for a point of order?
Can we just have a little bit of decorum? Please take some discussions outside and allow the speaker to be, even though I, allow the speaker to please continue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the good senator from Mangila. I apologize, Baragada, for requesting that. Mr. Speaker, I think I've already stated basically what it is, and I asked the consideration. I want to thank our legal counsel for trying to modify the language so it's a little bit more palatable regarding the fiscal condition of the government of Guam, and I ask you, as well as our colleagues, to put your consideration in terms of adopting this. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
On the amendment, there is an objection, this, oh yes, right here, I'm objecting to this amendment. Senator Calvo, and then Senator Rector, and then...
Mr. Chair, being that I have no conflict of interest in this amendment, I am totally in favor of this amendment.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak on the amendment? Senator Spodan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I also rise in support of this amendment. I am the co-sponsor, the unnamed co-sponsor of this one. And bottom line is that the rationale behind this is that I think we definitely all recognize the three branches of government, and this addresses the branch of government, the judicial branch of government. For them to effectively run their branch, they need to make sure, or we need to ensure that they get their appropriate allotments. I mean, once we've appropriated the money to them, they should have full use of those monies. And just for a point of notification for everybody, that the judiciary essentially, their budget is comprised of about 4% of their overall revenues or appropriations that the legislature sets out. So that's 4% that we're setting aside. And what we've seen in the past years, maybe even years, is that these allotments, even though money was appropriated by the legislature, these allotments have not been coming out in a timely fashion, which has really put a strain and hampered operations, and have also hampered the courts, the judicial branch's ability to move forward on a lot of their initiatives, especially initiatives that have a long-term view relative to the military buildup. And so by having this put in place, that judiciary will then be able at least to get their monthly allotment, or get their allotment on a monthly basis, so that they can proceed on as a third branch of government to undertake and work on their plans and initiatives as it applies to the judicial branch. So I stand in full support of this measure. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Any other member wish to speak on the amendment? Senator Rector?
Yes, thank you. I, it just, this was, this is a kind of, this is new to me as a freshman, the wording on this is kind of interesting, and I just want to make sure I understand what this is. So, I would like to ask the mover of the amendment if he could give me a quick fifth-grade summary, primer, of what the intent of this amendment is and what it's actually going to do. I, well, actually, let me say, let me describe what I think it does, and then you can confirm it. This basically just says that the director of DOA has to deposit their regular monthly budget on a 1/12 of their budget at the end of every month. Is that basically the gist of this?
Well, it's going to be equal to the percentage of the judiciary's budget based on the overall budgetary allocation. So it's a percentage as opposed to just breaking it up into 1/12. And I think that, if I may, Mr. Speaker, one thing, one of the, I think the caveat or key components of this particular amendment is that it's reflective of the prior month's cash collections as opposed to the existing month's cash collections, which provides the government an opportunity for managing cash flow a little bit better. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. In that case, I rise in support of this amendment, I think it's a good idea, thank you.
Senator Guthard, were you going to speak on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I will support this amendment if we can do the same thing for UOG, GCC, and DOE.
Senator Tenorio, on the amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask, we finished going through a provision the other day, what dealt with sequestering funds based on the revenue that is actually received by the government, and that's in 4109(c)(3) of Chapter 4 of Title V of GCA. The judiciary is not exempted from that, are they? The judiciary, so if the revenue is not meeting what the anticipated revenues are based on this body's agreement on the anticipated revenues, then they can also sequester those judiciary funds based on the actual allotments, correct? And not release the allotments even though this says that you shall?
I would leave it to the judiciary to rule that it does not.
Okay, yeah, I'm just concerned also that, you know, we want to make sure that you have a co-equal branch of government, and that the executive branch can't squash and ultimately restrict the flow of money going to the judiciary, because they have control over the pocket, or the purse, if you will, but at the same time, we also have to live within our means, and so if we have a division of the percentage of the judiciary based on the entire budgetary scheme, and a percentage is released, that just seems problematic for me. And I was looking over some of the provisions, I think the mover's amendment has some inkling of that, but I'm not sure if it's a complete safeguard. I just want to make sure that that section is in fact going to be applicable to judiciary as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Barnes, would you take the chair for a minute?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I certainly rise to the support, the judiciary as an independent branch of government, but it is still a branch, it is still a part of this government. And I think that what this tries to do, it sets it apart from this government and makes it maybe the republic of the judiciary, rather than a branch of the government of Guam. And I think that this government has worked, and tried to work harmoniously to provide the resources necessary for each of the different branches to work together and carry the same burdens that we all face. And in my opinion, this exempts the judiciary from doing that. And I think that's, you know, if there's any place I would like that to happen, it will be in education, it'll be in the schools, it'll be where I don't want the children to face any, anything at all, that they should come first, if that's what we're saying. But I think this allows that to be not the case. You know, the requirement that they get the cash, we already exempt the judiciary, and we have a policy that we are going to exempt them from the allotment process. So that means they get, when the resources are there, the allotment that they deserve, and so forth, and we all kind of share in the pie, as you want to call it, to make sure that we all are able to carry out our duties. So in that respect, we recognize that already, and the budget builds that into this formula. But I think this just takes it a little bit too much of a separation, not of powers, but certainly of resources. And I think that we just can't have that. I think that this budget and the way we've operated in the past, there is no reason why a police officer should be faced with not getting his overtime, and that's not going to be even, you know, a consideration by the judiciary. The judiciary gets the resources, I think, that it needs. As a matter of fact, we're providing them with additional resources. And there, you know, there has to be a way to work this out, but I don't think this is the way to do it. I think the line is not single file when it comes to this government and our duty and our responsibility. And this makes it a single-file line with the judiciary at the very front. And it just isn't that way. The reality with regards to the way the government works is just not that reality, and we want to take the judiciary out of the reality that everybody faces. And I don't think that that's fair to every other GovGuam employee, every other director, every other branch, except the judiciary. The judiciary has other resources, it doesn't, we don't even think about the judicial building fund that they have. We have taken ourselves out of that, and that remains available to them. That's a resource. So there are other resources that we don't even, we acknowledge belongs under the full control and measure of the judiciary, and we let them have that. But when it comes to the general fund and the resources that are there, I think it is appropriate that we all share in that, and that we don't draw based upon a single-file line, but we draw around a circle where everybody gets to draw. And I think that this move, for me, is just a little bit too much of the separation that is being invoked here as why this is necessary. There is nothing in this budget that infringes and impedes the separation of powers between the judiciary and the rest of the government of Guam, this legislative branch, and the executive branch. And that this is not a question of separation of powers in the way that this is being presented. It is a question of how are we going to approach all of the other needs of this government, and how are we going to be able to work together? And this says that we don't want the judiciary to work together, they don't have to work with us, they're just going to get it, they're going to go on their way, and I think that's just not a good thing. And therefore, that is my objection here, because I don't think there's anything else in this budget, there's any motivation of any other government official to impede upon the independence of the judiciary or the separation of its authority by what is in this budget. And I think, given that, in my opinion, this amendment is unnecessary for the protection of the separation of powers and for the protection of the independence of the judiciary. It just is not necessary. There is no threat, there are no motivations of anyone that wants to work with this budget and wants to work with the judiciary. We all know the people we deal with, and it is not because they want something and they're trying to force the judiciary by withholding the resources for them to do something. I don't believe that. I believe that when the resources aren't there, that the powers that have the authority are set up in the policy that we put in place in the budget bill, gives everyone the opportunity and gives the people an authority to maximize the opportunity to make sure the judiciary gets its share. And there's nothing to impede it, and in that respect, I look at this amendment as being unnecessary to achieve what we think we, is necessary to achieve, because nothing in here prevents that. So, I object to the amendment, Madam Speaker, or Madam Chair.
Sejose Masi, Speaker Pangolin. Speaker Palacios on the Ogden Amendment. I mean, Senator, I lied, that's okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
That was a good one. Senator Palacios, please proceed.
Madam Chair, I rise in support of this amendment. And as I read this amendment, Madam Chair, it brings to mind the problems that the judiciary encountered with respect to the allocation or the allotment for FY09 budget. And I believe, Madam Chair, that the judiciary should not be subjected to a perceived fear that perhaps, for the perceived fear that they might inhibit them to exercise, I guess, free and absolute judicial discretion, because of a perceived that retaliation might be manifested in the way that allotment, for example, might be withheld and so forth. It's human nature, and as long as we subject the judiciary in that condition to be reliant on somebody's authority for the release of the allotment, there is the element of potential, I guess, restraint in the exercise for a free and absolute discretion, of course, in the exercise of their function. And this is essentially saying that on a monthly basis, you have to deposit some, and I'm not suggesting an amendment, but perhaps every month, 1/12 of the budget amount be deposited, regardless of percentage and whatever. But the way, the point is, I support the concept as it is right now, and it is because of that, so that that way, they do not have to quote-unquote beg for the allotment to come out. Thank you, Madam Chair.
One, to Senator Palacios. Senator Palacios, based on that suggestion, did you want to do an amendment, or that was just a suggestion?
No, 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 it's an idea.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Senator Guthard, you're recognized.
You know, I have a lot of respect for the judiciary, Madam Chair, but I'm wondering about the amendment, because it sort of reminds me... about the amendment, because it sort of reminds me when the federal court ordered that this government, every week, deposit a million dollars in the court from the general fund. Every week, we did this for about, was it seven weeks? We deposited a million dollars in the federal court, and it didn't take into consideration the difficulties this government was having, the results of doing that, how it affected the cash flow of the government, how it affected the other agencies of government, how it even affected the court. The court didn't get some of the money that it needed, because we had to turn money over to the federal court every week for seven weeks, a million dollars. So I'm wondering if this would have the same effect if we were required to do this, automatically reserve 1/12 of the yearly budget of the court, automatically give it to them. Would it not have the same effect that the million-dollar deposits every week had in the federal court on the rest of the government? It's the same principle. Now, I want to make an amendment to the amendment.
Senator Guthrie, do you have that in writing?
It's writing in my mind. It's very simple.
Okay. Just noting, it's after five.
And if the legal counsel can help me, it's a very simple amendment, to insert DOE, UOG, and GCC as part of this amendment, that we should also do the same thing for DOE, GCC, and UOG. So moved, Madam Chair.
On the amendment to the amendment to include UOG, GCC, and DOE as a part of this amendment, are there any? Is there an objection? I heard an objection? If there's no objections to the motion, what? Motion carries. Are there anybody else speaking, wishing to speak on the amendment, on the main amendment? On that, I'm going to ask that Senator Frank Uggan, there's nobody else wishing to speak, you may close on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I want to thank our colleagues for really the discussion and the good Chair of Finance and sharing his perspective. And you know, when I was looking at this amendment in terms of the initial impact, and you're looking at the overall percentage that is going to be received from the prior months' cash flow, that percentage remains the same. So if in fact there's an increase in revenues, that percentage remains the same, but it shall not exceed the overall allocation for that month. If it dips, then in this particular case, it would be reflective of the decrease in the amount of revenues coming into the government. But Madam Speaker, or Mr. Speaker, in this particular case, I'll just close my, my statement on this.
Excuse me, Ms. Speaker, I make a correction, a point of correction. I made a mistake on my amendment. I'd like to correct it.
There is a...
I'll re-link the mic, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, you're very kind, I appreciate it.
There's a rec...
Yes. And, thank you, Ms. Speaker, Ms. Chairman, in Section 22111, it refers to 4%. My amendment should have changed that to 12%, 1/12.
No.
No. 1/12. No? No? Well, one-minute recess, Mr. Speaker.
There's a one-minute recess. Committee of the House back in session. Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I think that there are some very legitimate concerns being shared by a number of our colleagues as it applies to the overall cash flow. So based on our discussion and our conversation, Mr. Speaker, I kindly request that the committee report out this particular legislation out of the committee, and, and perhaps we deal with it as a single legislation in future sessions. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, so I rescind my amendment.
All right. On the motion to withdraw, no objections. Motion carries, it's withdrawn. Okay. The next person I have then on the list for an amendment to this chapter is Senator Palacios. Do you still have another amendment to this chapter? Okay. Is it?
One sentence.
Oh, okay, those are the complicated ones. But go ahead, sir.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I guess this was, it's actually a one paragraph or the half-page, and this is the naming of the Guam Police Crime Lab as the Director Guerrero-Perez crime lab. This bill has been heard, it is Bill 102 heard in July 9. Committee report is ready, but because this is very simple, it's just the naming, I, I like to propose that we add on, on the miscellaneous, and at the same time, add Ratinori, please, as the co-sponsor of this amendment. He is the prime, prime sponsor of Bill 102, and I didn't, I didn't, I'm not familiar with the protocol.
Can I declare that, that former Director Guerrero's son is my classmate?
Perez, Perez.
And that, can I ask that I be the third co-sponsor?
This is former Director Perez, not Guerrero. Former Director Perez?
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. On the amendment by Senator Palacios, any objection? No objection? The amendment carries. After Senator Palacios, we had Senator Rector. You sure you don't want to reconsider introducing it? All right. Senator Rector, we'll do one more then.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My next amendment, which will change lives, is, is in front of everybody, and it goes into miscellaneous provisions, and it's the living wage for Guam's families law. It has had a public hearing in the beautiful village of Yumatic, and you attended.
Yes, I did.
Thank you very much. Let me, let me tell you, this is a fairly voluminous law, and everybody's seen the committee report that it's been out, hopefully you've looked at it. Well, then I would suggest you go online and look at it, because it has been turned in. The living wage concept was actually invented by Pope Leo XIII, when he said that it is government's role to ensure that every worker receives a living wage. This concept has gone forward over the years and been implemented in cities across the United States, countries across Europe, and even states across the United States. And while every city may be different, and every state may have a, a different provision in the code, and how they implement a living wage law, ours is quite, it's quite clear how it's, it's written, and I, I did something in this that I, that I thought was, was unique in it. So what this law basically says is that anybody that works for a company that receives tax breaks from the government of Guam, or does business with the government of Guam, must pay their employees a living wage. And this law defines a living wage as basically the qualifying level for a family of four. So that, which is currently about 1340 an hour, last time I checked. But that way, this is always going to be updated, and it's always going to keep our families out of poverty. When we give tax breaks to corporations to come and do business on our island, we do it for one reason and one reason only, and that's to create good jobs for our people so that they can pay taxes, so that they can do business on Guam, and so that they can raise a family. Unfortunately, though we have given out many, many tax breaks and job subsidies, we haven't created the type of jobs that we wanted. Unfortunately, we've created low-wage poverty-level jobs, and even the recent job report says that the average person working in a hotel currently is making about 740 an hour, I believe, which is incredibly low. Oh, as of today, 815 an hour, thanks to the raise in the minimum wage, as I just pulled it up. Now, 815 an hour, now, this is what the average person working in a hotel makes, 815 an hour. If you're making 815 an hour, you qualify for food stamps, you qualify for MIP, and you qualify for EITC. So not only are the people of Guam subsidizing these corporations, and they're subsidizing the workforce, but they're also paying out over $50 million a year in EITC, Earn Income Tax Credits. This just isn't the way the program was designed. This isn't the way that the qualifying certificate program was designed, this isn't the way that anything's designed. What this law will do is raise thousands of families out of poverty. What this law will do is raise, the government co-offers, I believe, over 3.8 million, no, about, I've got to look it up now, I'll close with it, but it'll generate millions and millions of dollars in revenue for the government of Guam, even if it takes half of the people up above the level of, that they qualify for Earn Income Tax Credit. That means it'll give $25 million back into the co-offers of GovGuam that we can put forward to public education, so our kids can have decent schools, which we can put into our hospitals, so our families can have decent health care. So I ask my colleagues to support this bill and this amendment, well, I guess it's an amendment at this point. You know, once again, this is our opportunity to change the lives of tens of thousands of our families. This is a chance for us to live thousands of families out of poverty. This is a chance for us to truly make a difference. And so I ask for all my colleagues' support on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the body wish to speak on the amendment? Senator Espodón?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I understand the arguments in favor as proffered by the previous speaker and the mover of this amendment. However, I'm having difficulty taking a position at this point in time, because there are a lot of related questions that come to my head. And when you start talking about changing the rate structure like this, and again, forgive me for not going to the website, checking out the, the committee reports, because I was expecting this be returned to the floor in bill form, so that we could see the committee reports at that point in time. I guess one of the questions is really, what does this do to the business community in terms of, you know, those who supposedly are being subsidized? And when we start talking hotels, and we start talking to other, other entities out there who may qualify as those being subsidized by the government, but then if you really take a look at, or if we really start asking ourselves, what does it mean in terms of the projections that they have put forward in trying to survive, survivability over X amount of years? All of a sudden, those numbers go out the door. And now we're taking them by surprise, sneak attack on the back door, saying, well, wait a minute, all those projections you've done to justify your existence on Guam no longer apply. And as a potential result, and I believe it probably is a very real potential result, you may see some businesses close. And so what that hap, what happens there is that these same people, these employees who were trying to raise out of poverty, now no longer are making minimum wage, now they're making no wage. And that's the threat. And there are several other points, but I think that's a major point that I still have to overcome in my head that would, you know, wherein I can actually feel comfortable supporting something like this. Because as it stands now, with that consideration, still, again, being analyzed as we speak in my head, I haven't overcome that part of it, in that the result of something like this could potentially close down some businesses and eventually put people out of work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Espodón. Any other member of the body wish to comment on this? No, nobody else? Senator Tenor?
Mr. Chairman, I object, I call the question.
All right. There's a motion, there's a call of question, and the chair will then call for the vote on the, on the amendment. So on the amendment to place...
Point of information, Mr. Chair, if you call the question, doesn't it take a two-thirds vote to, to go to a vote to stop debate?
I'll have to check on that. I don't know that off the top of my head. All right. One-minute recess. Legislature's back in session. The call for the previous question does not require two-thirds vote. So there is a call for the question, actually, it doesn't even require a vote. There's a call for the previous question, and I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of the Rector amendment to place an amendment to add Chapter 10 of 22GCA for the living wage for Guam's families onto, as an amendment to Chapter 12 of Bill 58? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Okay. We will recess until tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. Senator Ada has a hearing in Malaso tonight, and you are all invited. Senator Calvo? I have here the box of the performance-based budgeting.
I have here the box of the performance-based budgeting for just the Department of Public Works, and you're welcome to borrow my copy, or if you want a copy... No, but that's my copy, and that's only for the Department of Public Works. We are in recess until 10:00 a.m., I mean, 9:00 a.m. tomorrow.